Hello?
We see you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our Thursday, April 15th meeting to order. We have a few council members joining us via Zoom. Who do we have on Zoom? Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk?
We have Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Wright.
Okay, all right. So with that, if we could all stand, we'll ask Minister DJ here to give us a prayer. After that, if we could repeat our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Lord, we just thank you once again for just giving us a glorious day. We ask you, Father, also to come down into our midst tonight and guide us through each agenda item. You know the purpose, Father, you know the goals, and we just ask you to help us, Father, especially when we cannot help ourselves. We thank you for such a great day. We thank you for healing. We thank you for taking care of us, all of our communities as we all continue to go through the pandemic. Lord, we just need you right now. We need you for peace and love. We need you for guidance. We need you to help us to see it through. And, Lord, we just thank you, and we continue to give all the glory to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman here. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. All right, there's a motion by Councilman Dawkins to approve. There's a second by Councilman here. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Kinston? Okay. Councilmember Wright?
Green.
Councilman Davis?
Green.
And Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting, okay? Item 6.0, the consent, Council, I'll look to you for action. All right, this is a motion by Councilman Dawkins. There's a second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Wright?
Green.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Ingram. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. Item 7.01, options for relocation and repurpose of Fayetteville Market House. Mr. Tolan, this is your space? Thought you were the money man.
Dual rose.
Okay, I got you. All right, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. J. Tolan, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer. So in January, Council gave two options to the manager to explore in reference to the market house, relocation and repurposing. With that information, two directors from the city were tapped, and Director Isaac of Construction Management and Dr. Wade, the Director of Human Relations. Those directors, they solicited information from experts and stakeholders to facilitate the data gathering process. For the relocation piece, Director Isaac worked with Mr. Fleming, a local engineer. And for the repurposing piece, Dr. Wade worked with a local subcommittee of stakeholders, and then they made recommendations on the repurposing. And then Mr. Lindstrom, a local architect, was brought in to do some renderings for the council's perusal. So tonight is the culmination of that work with the detailed presentations that I mentioned. The presentations will flow with the relocation coming first from Director Isaac, and then transition into the information about repurposing from Dr. Wade, and then we'll end with Mr. Lindstrom about possible options for repurposing. At the end of the presentation, staff is looking for next steps pertaining to the options presented. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Isaac of Construction Management.
Good evening. Cliff Isaac, Director of Construction Management. We were asked to look into the moving of the market house to three locations. LeMond Street Park, which is .4 miles. Arsenal Park, which is 1.2 miles. And Cape Fear River Park, which is 1.2 miles as well, from the current location. So we met and spoke with people, just like PWC, moving companies, our local structural engineer, and evaluated the different routes to the three locations. We gathered this information by traveling, walking, and looking and seeing all that was before us, even meeting on site with the moving company and others. The findings are as follows, as well as Mr. Fleming can help as well. It was built in 1838. It's 75-foot high, approximately 55-foot wide and 94-foot long. Arsenal Park and Cape Fear River Park present a greater challenge due to the amount of utilities, obstructions, such as railroad tracks, the road slopes, intersections, existing landscaping, roundabouts, and existing bridges. Initial budget estimates for the move included foundation design, footings, soil testing, site preparation, restoration construction of the masonry columns that are historic, traffic control, power, and communication wiring along the routes. At each intersection, you'd have to move those out of the way. The movement of traffic lights out of the way. A professional moving company for moving the building, project manager, and contingency. So we looked at all that packaged together. So along with Mr. Fleming, we have concluded the cost would be $2 million to relocate the market house to LeMond Street Park. The two other locations would even be higher, along with a needed analysis for the bridges that would be able to withstand the weight of the market house along the way. The relocation of the building and demolition of the existing masonry columns may impact the historical designation of the building, as well as the historic district. It's on the National Registry. PWC has also recently invested, I believe it was around three years ago, in over $1 million in underground infrastructure around the market house to protect from possible utility failures. So with that, to my side, we have local structural engineer, Mr. Fleming, who can help answer questions as well about the cost of relocation and the historical knowledge, his historical knowledge of the market house.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like I'm the only one that has something to say. Mayor, actually, I was ready to make a motion to deny, I guess, the thought of moving the market house. From last time I checked, it was still on the table, which is why it's here for us today to consider. I wanted to go ahead and just deny that option out. Relocation, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and remove the relocation of the market house for consideration.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. Is that a second or question? Question, okay. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Councilman Dawkins, and then now discussion question. Councilwoman Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the information you provided. One of the questions that I had is with the movers, how many moving companies were contacted?
We contacted three, and two provided quotes, ballpark estimates. Local house building movers would not be appropriate. This is high-tech machines and equipment to keep things extremely balanced.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the $2 million estimate, that is just to move the building. Does that, when I read through the report, it indicated that there would be damage to the pillars, that there would potentially be damage to the bricks and other damage to the structure. Does that $2 million include the repair once it's at the new site? Or does it just include moving, relocating the building?
I think from our initial look, as well as Mr. Fleming's analysis, that it would include a total restoration of those masonry columns. Yes. But true estimates would have to come later. Go ahead.
What is the potential variance between what has been presented as the estimate, excuse me, versus what the actual cost could be?
My name's Steve Fleming. I'm the Senior Principal with Fleming and Associates, Mayor Councilman. I think the estimate is an estimate, and so it would only be known after plans and design drawings and specifications have been developed, and then you bid and you get the contractor's price. So probably the biggest variable between the estimate that we provided would be damage that occurs to the market house in transport that we didn't know would happen. So that would be the biggest variable, but it did include, to the best of our knowledge, some repair, some damage and some repair. And also, the market house, as it sits where it is right now, has some structural deficiencies to it that need to be repaired right now in its current location.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fleming?
My hand is up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Wright? Okay, all right, Council, I didn't see who was first, so go Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and then Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question, well, my first question was, matter of fact, it's not even a question. I was wondering if Councilwoman Ingram would make a friendly amendment on her motion. I know in the past, we had the Department of Justice come out, and they supposed to came back out so that we can get some type of community feedback. And I think that that's something that we need to do before moving forward, because we want our citizens to have input and say-so on what's the options that we have. Before, in our external committee, we discussed citizens' engagement. We discussed just ways so that everybody can have a say-so, and we can look at different avenues. And none of that has taken place. The Department of Justice came out. They supposed to came back out to communicate with the community. I haven't heard anything about that. So I would like to see if she can make a friendly amendment so that we can have the Department of Justice come back out to get some community engagement, because prior to that, we made a motion to allow, to try to go ahead with a referendum, to give the citizens the opportunity to have a say-so. And I think that it would be very irresponsible to make a decision and not include the citizens in our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So Councilwoman Ingram, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Well, I think I have a few questions for the City Manager before I consider such.
Let me just say, we voted on the official engagement of Department of Justice. Was it last meeting? It was the first meeting of this month, which was the, was it the fifth? And so they are scheduled to return at the end of the month to start that. They have community conversations, but we did vote on that, Councilman.
Well, I think before we move forward with that, we should wait to the Department of Justice come back out before we make that final decision.
So...
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Manager, in reference to the committee that you have put in place, has there been... Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin brings up very good points, and jogging my memory as well, as I was a big lobbyist for community input. Would that, it's okay, don't answer that, yes, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, I would be very accepting of that.
Thank you, and I'll...
Sorry, you withdrawing the motion?
I guess I can restate it to say I would like to, well, here's what I guess the sticking point is. If we are, I guess we're here just to receive the report tonight. If we're not, we're not going to make any official changes, and we want to get the community engagement. So I guess my motion should be is, this is just relocation. You still have to talk over repurposing, correct? Okay, well, then I'm going to pull this motion, and then later I'll make a motion that will speak towards coming back with with input of how all this can be wrapped in, put to the citizens for dialogue. Thank you.
All right, so you withdrawing the motion, Councilwoman?
Temporarily.
Okay, all right, so the motion is withdrawn, Madam Clerk. Councilman Dawkins, you had a question? Or was that Jermaine to the motion?
Mr. Mayor, Jermaine's in motion, but it sounds like Councilwoman Ingram is withdrawing her motion.
Right.
So there's no motion on the floor?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right.
So I guess, all right, let go, and then I'll wait for if anyone has any additional motion.
All right, Councilman Wright, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I just have a question on the presentation of the preparation of the moving. They gave some footage, and there was a measurement of 90-something odd feet. And I wanted to question that, you said it was 75 feet high, 50-something feet wide, but where does the 90 come in? How do we measure that?
There's a historical plat that shows it being roughly 55-foot by 94-foot long.
So you didn't actually measure? You went by the historical plaque?
Yeah, it's historic in nature.
Okay, because I just don't see the 90-something feet long. But the question was also that you would have to take down street wiring and things of that nature, because it seemed like you're going to move it in the upright position. because it seemed like you're gonna move it, uh, in the upright position. And because we still haven't had input from our citizens, that price of taking down wires was included to come up to something, I believe you said, two million.
That's correct.
So if we could, okay, so if we could move it, if we decide to, could it be laid down instead of standing up to prevent from having to take down wiring? And that would be a reduction in cost. And I'm just putting that out there and thinking, um, to, you know, and putting it to the experts to see if that's something that is, uh, appropriate or something that could be done.
Thanks for the question, uh, Councilman Wright. As a structural engineer myself, uh, and, and Steve can, uh, also speak to you, uh, to this, removing the top part of the market house in order to lay down in any shape or form would create potential extreme damage to the market house, in my opinion. So just, you know, your, your thoughts.
So Councilman Wright, if you, if you take the building apart, you know, obviously, moving it would be probably less expensive. But I think it would determine, if you do decide ultimately to move it, it will determine, it will, a lot of how you move it will be determined by whether or not you want it to remain and have a designation as a national historic landmark. It is possible that you could move it in many different ways and get it to its new location and put it back together. And if it wasn't a concern that it stay, keep its designation with the National Park Service as a national landmark, you could probably look at other ways. I think what, what Mr. Isaac was doing is try to move it in such a way that it stays intact as much as possible, with the exception of about seven feet of the twenty masonry columns that support it. Right now, it has twenty masonry columns, and they would re- remove about five or six feet of the masonry columns to insert the beams to lift it. And so that, and then they would move it intact. And these companies do have the capability of doing that, but just lifting it and setting it down on a, on a dolly that can transport it, and then if you transport it up and down hills, you know, the potential for it to be damaged is pretty high, because it's made of very soft mortar, uh, very old bricks, and there's no structural reinforcing that holds all the arches together. So it's just the old nature of the building. But yes, you could move it in many different ways if you weren't, if you didn't worry about the historic designation.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Councilman Davis, and then Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin for a second.
Yes, I have two questions. One for a city attorney. If anyone there can give us some insight on potential legal parameters or, um, legal issues, um, as we look at, uh, moving, uh, historical landmark. And number two, who would, uh, pay, stroke the check for the more than two million dollar approximate, price tag for moving it? So I guess city manager can answer that, or no, city attorney can help the, help us speak to potential legal, uh, litigation. Thank you.
This is Lisa Harper, Assistant City Attorney, standing in for Ms. City Attorney McDonald right now. I do not know of any legal ramifications. Of course, you know, there can always be lawsuits that are brought, but I don't know of any legal ramifications as of this mo- moment.
The city would have to pay for the cost of the relocation. And embedded in well, in the relocation cost, um, that were shared, the council would also have to then figure out what you would put in its current location, whether that would be a fountain or something else. I think this all, the prices also include setting up this on a foundation at the other locations. But the cost to relocate it, like the cost to repurpose that we'll be talking about in just a moment, are, um, would be borne by the city.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Since there's no motion on the floor, I would like to make a motion, um, that we, uh, postpone this until the Department of Justice, um, come out before we make an official vote.
So there's a, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. I think part of what I had an interest in was hearing, you know, we talked about the re- location. Like to hear the remainder of the report about the repurposing. See if there are any questions with that. I, I do agree with taking substantive action until we have a chance to do the community engagement. But the purpose was to bring the information back to the citizens, and we haven't heard but half the report. So Councilmember Banks, do you mind, um, holding that until they give the repurposing part of the presentation?
No, I wanna go ahead and keep my motion out there, because I feel like we don't even really need to have a conversation without the citizens' engagement and DOJ at the table.
Okay, all right, so there's, there's a motion by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Is there a second? A second by Councilmember Kinston? All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you. Okay, Councilmember Wardell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we take this vote, I just wanna make this point. I don't have a, uh, an issue with, um, getting more information, but we have been hearing, um, that there's this proverbial kicking of the can. And, um, for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support this motion. But I do always support citizen engagement, and would like to see more of that in making these decisions. But I just wanted to clarify before we took this vote why I would not be able to support this particular motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman here, are you voting or question, discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor, just a, uh, discussion. Uh, I, I too will be moving the same direction. I, I do wanna get the, uh, the citizen input. I probably have maybe fifty to seventy-five items that I plan to share with council from citizens across the city. But I would like to hear, uh, the rest of the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Here. All right, Council, there was a, um, motion on the floor by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin to, uh, to, to end the disc. Is that a question?
No, that's more of a discussion, or yeah, question. Mr. Manager, just for clarity, um, and I guess listening audience, tonight, you know, we asked for this information to come back. Is it, mm, to, this is, to my understanding, we are here to hear this information. Were you actually looking for direction from council tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh, Councilmember Kinston, did you have a question on the discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, Councilman Clear, board, all right. So Council has a motion on the floor by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, um, to, to end the presentation. There's a second by Councilmember Kinston. Fed discussion, we need you to vote on this, um, at this time. Councilmember, uh, Davis?
Red.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, motion fails, uh, two to eight. Two to seven? Or eight, sorry, two to eight. Those voting, uh, in favor of Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and Kinston, those voting in oppose everyone else. All right, please continue, John.
Yes, uh, next up is Dr. Way to go through the repurposing, I mean, the, yeah, repurposing.
Dr. Way, good to see you, sir.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor. Greetings to you, Madam, uh, Board Member, pro town, members of council, always a pleasure. Let's see here, if I can, okay. So, on January the twenty-ninth, the, uh, I was, I received direction from the, um, city manager, and I was assigned the responsibility of assembling a working group to identify, develop, and prioritize strategic recommendations to the city for the repurposing of the Fayetteville Market House. If strategically repurposed, the historical market house has the potential to make a significant contribution as a community asset, as well, as well as to local and regional African-American history, positive community and race relations, residents' quality of life, as well as municipal tourism and the, and the regional economy. I have to give a lot of credit. I'm humbled that the individuals that are shown on the screen chose to be part of this working group. And I, and once again, I, I just wanna acknowledge them by name and by responsibility. Uh, you have Eric Olson, who is a Human Resources Division Chief at Womack Army Medical Center. He's former Military Equal Opportunity Director at Fort Bragg. And he's the current chairman of the Human Relations Commission. You had Kelvin C. Harney, Harney, who's the president of Greater Fayetteville United. You had Dr. Miriam Delone, who is Assistant Dean and Professor of the College of Humanities and Social Sciences, Fayetteville State University. Dr. Linda D. Tomlinson, the interim chair and associate professor, Department of Intelligence Studies, Geopacial Se- Geospatial Science, Political Science and History, Fayetteville State University. Dr. Stanley Warden, President, Methodist University. Simone Pemberton, Senior Training Manager at AT&amp;T, Secretary, Fayetteville-Cumberland Human Relations Commission. Bianca Shonman, President and CEO of Cool Springs Business District. Milett Harris, Equal Opportunity Director, Pope Army Airfield, Member, Human Relations Commission. Robert Pinson, interim president, CEO, the Arts Council of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. Michael Gibson, Director, Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recreation Center. Bruce Dolls, the Historical Properties Manager for, for Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recs. Deborah Mintz, retired Executive Director, the Art Council of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. And Eric Lindstrom, who will join me here at the podium shortly, Director of Design for S F L and A Architects. This group met three times in formal meetings. They had one small group meetings. Out of those deliberations came a total of seventeen options, which they drilled down to five top options. And those are the ones that we, uh, are, uh, presenting to you this afternoon, this evening. Mr. Lindstrom will help me in terms of the visualization after I share the, uh, the top five responses in, in order. So the, uh, the first was structural modification, which had to do with the inside lane of the traffic circle, bricked in to create a larger footprint for outside activities. Number two was art exhibits, in which the recommendation was that the four corners, five, four sidewalk corners, uh, be activated to speak to the diversity of the community, not necessarily just black history. The corners could host temporary art, making it an active space that people can engage in. There was another recommendation, also involving the art exhibits, and that was in depth with the emotional connectivity associated with the history of Fayetteville and the market house, highlighting successful black contributors to the structure. And there were different, uh, recommendations for uses upstairs, which dealt with present and the future, and downstairs with the past. Commerce was number four, in which the, the recommendation was monthly market activity on the lower level, vendor emphasis on people of color, i.e. farmers, entrepreneurs, artists, et cetera, that carries down the street in front of the shops. It can also include a space for collection and sharing of oral histories. And themed events was number five, a destination visit for education of the student community, pre-K through twelve, and college and university, with a combination of static displays, plays, volunteer opportunities, and master classes. And at this particular time, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Lindstrom join me. And, uh, he is over here. And we'll try to add some vibrancy to the recommendations through his renderings.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Eric Lindstrom, I'm of the S F L A Architects. And it's a, it was really an honor to work with this committee. It was their deliberations and the thought that they put into this was really, really extraordinary. Sorry about that. It was really an extraordinary effort to, to work with them, and the ideas that they came up with were fantastic. As an architect, it was a little bit challenging, because none of them, none of them related specifically to a building necessarily. Let's see. They talked about all kinds of things, all kinds of ideas about addressing the issues at hand, being honest about the history, honest about the truth, engaging with public art, reaching out to others, reaching across the aisle, all kinds of great ideas. But how does that translate into a building? And I'm gonna show you how that may play out in each of the five options. But I, as I started to look at it and provided information to the committee, it's first to look at the public facilities and what other communities are doing, and how they've addressed these, these issues in other locations. This is actually, in Philadelphia, this is the President's House. And these ruins were uncovered as part of the restoration of Liberty Bill, um, uh, exhibition, which is in the, in the background. But they did this purposely to demonstrate and to spur discussion about how the founders of the coun- country, and George Washington in particular, brought nine slaves to reside in the President's House as we were forming this country. And so they have made this twenty-four hour exhibit, where you can go, and it's lit at night. It has displays where it goes in and tells the story. And again, they've done it preserving some of the history, but then also bringing in modern elements. In Alexandria, they actually had a downtown storefront that was, it was actually a slave trading offices, two different firms located in this exact, in this exact building. And what they did is they turned it into the Freedom House Museum. And I, I think the quote on this slide is, you know, like, for me, tells a lot. Talking about how they're taking a legacy of triumph as a foundation for the future. So they've really taken, you know, I think in that instance, they have changed the messaging around what was really, you know, a, a location that had a horrible history. In Charlottesville, uh, at UVA, UVA was constructed over, um, its early years, and it was staffed by over four to five thousand slaves, helped build the institution, and then also were there, um, uh, serving the people that were there. This was a student-led, um, uh, project to address, uh, the people that had worked there, the unsung heroes that had worked there. They engaged with an artist, an architect, a landscape architect, a community facilitator, a historian. And this was a group effort to bring the university community, the alumni of the city of Charlottesville, together to develop this, um, Site of Conscience and Memorial. In Houston, at the site where, um, obviously Juneteenth, was first acknowledged, at this location in Houston, this site was the first African-American park that was purchased by four former slaves in Houston. And this was also the site of the first nineteen-fifties, the only park in Houston that was available for African-Americans to come to. They have since turned it into a whole district. They have new facilities, it has old facilities, it has artwork, it has areas outside for people to, to gather. Again, it's, uh, Emancipation Park. In addition to public facilities, a lot, if you read any of the detailed comments about the, the report, there's a lot of discussion about public art. Because I think what everyone agreed is that public art can help our community have the difficult conversations around, uh, these types of issues. Picture here, um, in San Diego, they actually have an MLK trail along their waterfront. And so you see the large sculpture there, it's called Breaking the Chains. Uh, one in the upper right-hand corner is, is, uh, the cloak. And the one in the bottom is actually in London, but it's a, it's a recognition of, uh, the abolition of the international slave trade. So different communities have used artwork really around the country and around the world to address this. Uh, this is a, um, park and statue in Indianapolis. Uh, this is where actually Robert Kennedy gave a speech on the, uh, night that Martin Luther King was assassinated. And this is with the sculpture. And this came together again through a community, um, conversation. and this came together again through a community conversation. There was actually a competition in the local paper, and engaged artists and sculptures. This one's a little bit closer to home, it's a student-led sculpture at Chapel Hill, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, again, to commemorate the unsung heroes that helped build that institution. So getting specifically to the five recommendations, and how it may, how they may really kind of, the ideas might play out from a kind of a facilities architectural standpoint, is really the first idea was to draw a larger circle, and, or that's my simplistic name for it, but essentially it's increasing the size of the plaza around the market house, which is basically an unused traffic circle, it's where the, the mural is currently on the street, and this was thought to, again, give more space around the market house, where you could have more engagement, you could have more historical markers, things, things of that nature, but the concept around it was, I think, to really bring more people in, give a larger place to have community conversations around the issue. Number two is really, I kind of called it reclaim the square. Really, at the heart of our city is a square, not necessarily a market house. I'm going to show you some examples, but there is a larger civic space there, beyond the market house, it's the square, and are we really fully taking advantage of it? And so I think the thought was, is let's look at the whole design of the square, how we could incorporate, whether it's public art, whether it's memorials, whether it's better landscaping, whether it's better lighting, to again, make this a place for all of our citizens where we can gather, come together, and not just focus strictly on the market house. So as we looked at option number three, which is really starting to talk about providing access to the market house for educational, for secondary resources uses, we had to look at, how do we make then the market house accessible, accessible? So I'm showing that yellow object, it's a proposed elevator, and I'll show you some examples of how that may play out. The other resources that the city has in the neighborhood of the market house are, there is actually a vacant lot, that was formerly, historically it used to be a gas station many years ago, and it adjoins the historic city hall. So there's a lot of opportunity there, where we could expand the footprint of the market house in terms of trying to tell the story, tell the history, and deliver the message that we want to, want to do through, through these efforts. Number four was looking at the market house, really bringing back the, its use as a market, and so to do that, I think it really plays into some of the others, which again is addressing the square. I think one of the, when we've had festivals in the past, and when they've tried to restart market houses, markets there, it's very limited in terms of the amount of area you have, in terms of restrooms, facilities. So again, I think this is an opportunity where we could reclaim the whole square, also work with some of the other facilities, such as the former city hall that's there on the site. And number five is really destination, I kind of call it destination education, and where you really take advantage, the committee talked a lot about making this a place where every student in Cumberland County could come, but you know, for them to come, there has to be meaningful information and history displays being told there, and the market house is very limited in that. So, again, we're looking at possibly the possible expansion and inclusion of the former city hall, but there's also the opportunity on that vacant lot that I mentioned, where there could be a new building constructed there, that might be a visitor's center or an education center, that would really begin to develop a completely new dialogue, and a new place to have a dialogue about the market house and the history of Fayetteville. And really, when I look at all of them, and, and they're really, a lot of them are programmatic ideas, I think there could be in all of the above in there as well, because I think if the market house is to be repurposed, we are trying to make it accessible to all, we are trying to tell the true story that happened there, and we're trying to make sure that everybody in the community feels welcome, and, and, you know, we acknowledge the pain that it has caused, and the memories it has for, for members of our community. So just quickly, how some of those things may play out, we haven't designed anything, obviously, because we don't know what we're going to do, but Fayetteville has historically had several squares, and the market house is really the last one, the market square is the last recognizable one that we have. You know, an idea is that we do something similar to what Raleigh did, where they made their city square in a plaza, so you still allow cars to drive through it, but it has a more friendly urban space that you might have, whether it's again artwork, fountain, historical, interpretive things. It's more focused on engaging people, where they can sit, experience, have dialogue, where it's just not a traffic circle, where the primary focus is moving vehicles around the structure. Everyone is asked a lot about accessibility, and, you know, how do you, how would you get people, how would you make the market house accessible? Well, this has been, this has been done in many communities with historic buildings, and there's many ways to do it where it can be a beautiful thing, and these are some examples, the, the standards are, is you can't do anything that would, that couldn't be undone in the future. So you, you want to do things that are light, in touch to the structure, that could be conceivably moved, the reality is accessibility is, is probably here to stay with us for a long time. The image on the, on the right is, is probably a little bit out there for Fayetteville, but I think it's important that this is an example of the Holocaust Memorial in Boston, here this is in a very historic neighborhood, but they took something that was very different, but made it very beautiful. And again, it kind of reminded me of the elevator on the, on the previous slide. And so I touched a little bit about public art, and this is a, this is a piece, this is at the Underground Railroad Museum in Indianapolis, and this particular artist, this is telling her story of her family going back all the way from when they came from Africa. So it's not just about sculptures that you put on the street or murals, these could be displays that could be, you know, within, in the lobby of that new facility, or within the old city hall. You know, North Carolina has started a African-American music cultural trail, and again, these are, these are monuments and places around the state that are part of a trail that you can go and visit. We certainly have our own, I think, contributions to that story, and again, this just demonstrates that there is, there is a demand and interest to go to these types of facilities, and they can be beautiful, too. A lot of the suggestions had to talk about, let's provide this, again, going back to the idea of public art, that this could be a space for all artists, but artists of color, from all of our communities, to have a place to express themselves through artwork in the, in, in the market house, or in an adjoining facility. And, and here's an example of one of those types of facilities. It could also tie into a maker's space, where again, you're engaging youth, you're bringing people in, you're telling that story, you're telling that history, and then you're giving meaning to the place because you're engaging the people, you're allowing them to gauge in, in the building, in a completely different way than what they're used to engaging with it at. And I think one of the other things that was important, that was definitely noted, is there is a lot of history to be told, there's, there's history to be told about Person Street, there's a history to be told about the founders of our African-American community, and we would want to see that being told, and, and it's being done all across the country, and it's really so easy today with things like phones and QR codes, where you can really let people develop their, their own, their own tour. So, those are just some of the ideas that we began to generate out of the five recommendations, and again, I appreciate the opportunity for being able to participate in that.
Thank you, sir. Council, subject to your questions, that concludes our report.
Yes, sir, we do, thank you, Dr. Wade and Mr. Lindstrom, great report, great ideas, do have several questions, I, I just kind of wanted to, to know one or two things, can you put back up the committee, that, the work group?
Yes. They've been having some challenges with the bronchitis, I was over at the VA last week, so, so, but I appreciate that, thank you, sir. Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, as you were working in the work group, I liked the, the art and the, and the architectural piece, but what, did you all expand that circle at all to community members? Because, you know, citizens send some good ideas, like I get a lot of emails and say, hey, have y'all thought about this, and I try to share what I, what we can, but I was just wondering, as you talked about this, and I know this was just giving us something, which is probably just scratches the surface, have you thought about how to increase more citizen engagement, or some type of contest maybe to get ideas, you know, just, just some options, I don't know if the work group talked about that?
All good ideas, sir, the, there's always the discussion of community engagement and community dialogue. Given the assignment that we were provided, like the, we achieved that objective, and certainly, the council desires more discussion involving community, that's certainly, certainly within your authority, sir.
Got you, thank you, Dr. Wade. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that I was most excited, or most moved by the repurposing conversation. I am prepared to make a motion, and we can go into discussion phase for everything else, but I think this council will be pleased with, you know, whatever motion I make, but that, I would like to make a motion to take...
Councilwoman, can you, you mind me, let me get a couple of questions in, and I'll circle back to you. Councilwoman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that presentation as well, and just a few thoughts, in the, the work that your committee put in, is commendable. Thank you, Dr. Wade. Was there a monetary value on each idea as you went down? Is there any type of idea of what those would cost?
No, sir, there was no budgetary impact projected at this particular time.
Okay, so, and I like the idea of a market square or, or plaza in the way you, you guys laid it out there. Accessibility and connectability is what, is what I like. When, when we're talking about the center of the city, you know, a lot of people were talking about a fountain and, and water there, but I think a fountain would just be limited as to the potential that we have there in economics, education, peace for our children, things of that nature. And I was concerned about the, the price tag that it would cost for us to, to do something like connectability, you know, and build something on a second level from each, you know, because you're talking about a square...
Yes, sir.
To, to take it up to a second level, where you can have a deck coming all around the square as well, and also up on the deck, it's market value, people can be up there selling and things of that nature, but that would be another, an attraction, if you will, to, to also better the city. So, when you're talking about accessibility, I know you talked about the old city, city hall there, and that's, that's all we saw. So, how much vision are we looking for in, in what all we can do with that square? And I'm glad you called it square, but you, you, you drew the square into some of the buildings on the other side, so are we talking about, how can we maximize on that square?
Yes, and the square concept was really addressing the square on the ground, we were not necessarily proposing to raise anything up, but I think if you look at the, if you look at the configuration of the square itself now, it is a vintage nineteen fifty's traffic circle at the time that there wasn't a ninety-five. And, and so, if we're going to make, it, it is a place where historically we could come together in one way or another as a community, but it's, it's designed for automobiles instead of cars, so I think there's a tremendous opportunity where we could make it more like the city square in Raleigh, or packed place in Asheville, or, you know, where again, it's focused on the pedestrian, and it's going to give us space to do things like public art, or, I think your assessment of the fountain is correct, I don't think there's really enough room there to, to do that, because I think there's so many more things that we could do there. The accessibility in terms of the elevator, I think, needs to be primarily addressed with the market house, and that would be a standalone kind of object next to the market house.
Okay, and finally, you know, I was looking at some of the ideas you had, and I was thinking about a historical trail, like, history trail, and it would be, a history trail is more than just African-American history, but it's, it's the history of our city and our citizens' cultural art and diversity. So, as looking into the future of what that square would look like, it would be the diversity of the city. Of course, we're changing the image, changing, we cannot change the story of where we come from, but we could take that and says, how far we have come, and we could send that message in the diversity, in the historical trail of, of the, of our, of our area there in this region, and I think that would be a, a really, a point where people want to come see, and it would bring, you know, tourism and that type of thing, in, in the sense that it's more than just one race...
Sure.
But it's, it's diversity, and how can we tell that history?
And, and again, great credit to the committee, the working group, they, that was one of the things they said, they said, you know, it, certainly the focus is African-American history, but it doesn't have to be limited to African-American history. This city has a richness, simply because of the strength of its diversity, and we've had many people who've made contributions to this great city, and, and hopefully, should the council choose to pursue this, there, there are, there's a wide breadth of opportunities for us if we travel down this path.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Wade, for your participation in the external committee, you were that liaison for this city for us, and you contributed greatly, and I don't think we would have been further down the road if it hadn't not been for your input and your knowledge, so thank you and the staff for...
It was an honor to serve the staff, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Wade, before I go to Councilman Dawkins, Mr. Manager, you had your blue light on, and you turned it off, did you need to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'd also too, would like to thank Dr. Wade, and Cliff Isaacson, Eric, Steve Fleming, all the members of the task force or committee. When council tasked me with this in January twenty-seventh, I really didn't know where to go, so I had to really turn to folks in the community who have a passion for this, and who have a wider vision. And I think almost to, to the person, all of them who I've had an opportunity to talk to individually, have expressed the same things that I've heard from several council members tonight, that if the council is interested in moving forward with the repurposing, or even the relocation, because the relocation is another form of repurposing, because when you move it somewhere else, you got to figure out what to do with it when you put it on that new location. All of them, again, all that I've talked to, have really stressed the need for a larger community dialogue. None of them, of the twenty people who worked and worked very hard, and met after hours, and came up with these concepts, would believe that the five would be, council pick, pick one of the five and go with it. All of them need to be fleshed out, and as a matter of fact, some of them were very forceful in letting me know that while they supported the work, that the work does, this is the beginning, and it needed to have that larger community dialogue. Mayor, while I've got the floor as well, and at, at an appropriate time, with Dr. Wade being here, at council's action to accept the Department of Justice Spirit Program, Dr. Wade had actually, has already been in contact with Mr. Lyons, and potentially could talk about that as well, give you an update, as well as maybe how that program could also inform some of these decisions, because you're going to be asking people to expose themselves, so you, some of that's kind of baked in, but I did want to leave it with you that no matter what you decide, the group and staff believe that you have to have a larger community dialogue, but we wanted to just give you a taste of what some of the options could be if repurposing at its current location is something that council finds amenable.
Okay, thank you. Go to Councilman Dawkins here, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of comments, and I do have, I do have a couple of questions, and I also want to thank Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Lindstrom, and Dr. Wade, and for all you Army guys here, a good United States Air Force veteran, so want to make sure you all are aware of that, and, so thank you, Dr. Wade.
Thank you, sir.
I, I do have, and I also want to thank Council Lady Ingram for her earlier motion, I would like to take off the table the movement of the market house. Uh, I would like to take off the table the movement of the Market House, um, and so that we focus on repurposing the Market House where it stands. So, if that motion comes back up, I'm going to support it. Uh, so, but I definitely wanted to thank Council Lady Ingram for that earlier motion. And I'm, I'm definitely interested in hearing what her next motion will be. Um, reclaim the square. The question, Mr. Lindstrom, um, I needed to understand, um, were you implying that we would actually close those four streets? Because I, I, I was interested in that, um, very much so to build, in effect, a true square. But I didn't know if you had researched whether the city had the ability to do that, or if we had to get state of North Carolina approval? So, that's like four questions in one. But I know you can handle it, because you've been around a long time, and you've been a great asset, and you've built some beautiful buildings that are still standing in our city. So, I want to congratulate you.
Well, thank you. That question did get asked at one of our, at one of our things. Are you talking about closing, closing, closing the street? I think that is a larger conversation. I think at a minimum, you want to make the square where it could be easily closed. And when it's closed, you, you don't have a place where people are tripping over curbs or traffic signs. It's a place where we could very easily and seamlessly close down if there was a community event or a community market. You know, I mean, I, I think it could be closed, but there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of other, you know, downtown merchants, DOT, you know, there, there, that, that would, um, I think it needs to be a discussion down the road. But I think the goal would be is to make it to where it could flip very quickly to be a, to be available for event, or if there's a tour or an educational thing, uh, again, where it would just turn from a roadway to, uh, a city plaza very quickly.
All right. Thank you. And one more mention, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for mentioning earlier about, we do need to get a lot of public input. Uh, that's going to be crucial. Um, one of the ideas that a citizen had told me was, was take out Green Street and make a plaza there in front of the old city hall. And that would be a, a, a walk, walking plaza where we could put, erect a statue of a, of a slave having a child ripped from their arms, that sort of thing. Because this needs to be historical, um, but I also believe that we've got to tell that awful story so that folks know that some awful things happened here. But from that, from that has arisen a, uh, a very diverse city that, that's, that's moving forward. So, I wanted the council to be aware that we, we could consider possibly closing, taking up Green Street at that hundred block there beside First Citizens Bank and old, and the Old Fayetteville City Hall, and creating a plaza there. It could be an African-American plaza, whatever it would be. But I think we've got to tell the story. Uh, I want the Charles Chestnut and different leader, E. Smith, different leaders, that their, their story needs to be told, because they were risk-takers. I, I want the African-Americans who met in that Market House when they were on the town council in the eighteen hundreds, I want their stories told. Uh, because a lot of folks don't know that we had African-American town council members. Um, so, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, as always, Councilmember Dawkins. Um- One of my questions sort of was somewhat answered because I was thinking about the walkability and folk going back and forth from the street intersections or corner sidewalks, and how that would play if it was going to be closed. So, that's somewhat, it's already been, uh, somewhat answered, we, well, thought about. We haven't gotten to an answer yet. So, I guess I really won't ask that question, and I will just make this comment. Uh, like many of you, I have polled my district. I sent out emails several months ago, um, and I probably have about eight thousand email addresses. I guess I got, I got so many back, about fifty or sixty, and ninety percent of those were for repurposing. I only shared maybe one or two of my councilmembers, but I plan to let you all see them all now since we're, we're here. I was waiting for this time. But I do like the, um, the concept. I, I like what our, uh, the citizens that I've heard from within my district, um, and I have a melting pot of, uh, of diversity, just like all the districts are, well, just, well, our entire city. So, the comments came from a variety of people, and I would love to just share that with my councilmembers. Um, but I do, uh, support pretty much the, uh, the repurposing idea. I really, really like, uh, what I wanted you also to do. If you would go back, I missed the, the picture. I wanted, I wanted to take a picture, because I didn't see it in my cam, the one before the children up under the flower pot. It was the one, that was the one I wanted. If you would show that again, please? Because I didn't see it in here. The picture's in here.
That one, sir?
Sir, the next one, the one before that.
The one before that.
Uh, yeah, that one. Um, thank you. And once again, thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? Councilmember Banks?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. My question is, um, because it still, it still seemed like, uh, council was trying to move forward. What is the purpose of the Department of Justice, uh, coming back? You said this month, or was it next month? Because that's my question.
Yes, ma'am. So, it's, it's this month. They have a city spirit program. But I think, uh, the way I understood from, uh, Mr. Lyons and Dr. Wade's been engaged with them more, as you talk to the community and, and move about and get the various groups to the table from different opinions, you have to have options for people. You know, there's one, there's one thing to say, repurpose, but I think tonight's conversation gave us ideas about what repurposing means, or, or at least it, it scratched the surface of what it could mean. Same thing with relocation. Like, if, if, you know, whether the council decides one way or another on the relocation, uh, the public needs to know what's in, what's involved in that. I mean, and, and to me, I, I benefited from hearing how much it costs possibly, uh, if the building would be damaged, and what the, the pros and cons are. So, I don't think that one takes the place of the other, but I think that getting, uh, them engaged with their program, they have a model, they work with Dr. Wade, and we just give as much information as we can. So, that's the way I see it.
Okay. Because I know, I, I, I've, I've heard you mention that tonight, uh, with the city manager, well, tonight was just, um, us getting the information. But, and our options, one and two, that says something different. And our options is stating that we're choosing whether we're gonna repurpose or relocate the Market House. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Or are we just receiving information?
Yes, ma'am. Um, staff did make a recommendation, um, which is that the, um, council look to repurpose at its current location and not move it. Um, and coming to, um, that recommendation, um, we looked at, um, the fact that if you are gonna move it, you're still gonna have to repurpose it. And no matter what is at that location, it will always have, be the site of the Market House, whether it's moved or relocated or stays there. And so, until we, as a community, deal with the issues that are at hand, and we think through the Department of Justice and the dialogue, um, that the, we were hopeful that the council will have, using the Market House as part of a catalyst for that conversation, and a larger conversation as well, about things which this community and really the nation have not talked about ever, that it may be an opportunity for us to reclaim the history and reclaim that space for a higher public purpose. And so, it is staff's recommendation, and it's only a recommendation, that, um, uh, we believe that, um, a, a great option would be to repurpose it in place and have that dialogue about how we are able to truthfully tell the story. And when I say reclaim it, I mean reclaim it so that everyone in the community says they know the history, but they also say, um, that they look for, um, opportunities to be able to say that this community has done something that not many have done, which is to talk truthfully about a very painful time in our nation's history. And so, that's just a recommendation. Um, but, um, council, of course, has any options on the table. But from a professional standpoint, um, one of the things that I was hopeful and, and would love some direction on this from council is, you did give us, um, a task on January, end of January, and I hope that the presentation to date, that we've met the obligation that you've had. So, I'm tired.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not finished. Well, um, city attorney, she's not there, but one, one of my, my question is, um, for her or yourself, is that, um, I, I would like to request an investigation for the Department of Justice to investigate this matter. What steps do, what steps need to be taken?
Okay. Oh, uh, Council, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, can you explain a little bit more about what you're, what you mean by that?
Because I feel that they supposed to have been coming back, um, to have a dialogue. We're sitting here, um, a motion, um, well, one of the councilmembers are trying to put out a motion to make the decision. Um, we're constantly saying that we want citizens' input, and we're still not giving citizens the opportunity for that input. And if, if we're gonna go ahead and, um, or we're given that opportunity to go ahead and make motions, I would just go ahead. I, I, you know what? I just want to make a motion that we just go ahead and relocate, um, the Market House. If we're not gonna wait for the Department of Justice to come in and allow citizens to, um, be engaged, we need, I'll, I'll make a motion, re- relocate it.
All right. So, give me a second. I, what I have to do, uh, as I told Councilmember Ingram, I'll catch the remaining questions. I think Councilmember Waddell, uh, has her light. Then I'll circle back, uh, to Councilmember Ingram or, or yourself to make-
Well, that's, well, well, excuse me, ma'am. Well, that's my, um, that's, that's my motion. And if anybody would like to second it, I appreciate it.
Right. Well, I'll, I'll circle back to you to, to, to be able to do that. And, um, but let me, let me finish the questions. The last light is, well, two more lights. Councilmember Waddell, and then Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm ready to take action. I don't have a question. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Proton?
I'm good.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, um, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, I think, you know, based off of listening to what everybody has said tonight, um, I think the motion that I have will help you a bit better. But I do want to say this, um, we've, we have two items that staff had, that council has directed staff. One is a project that was inspired, actually, by Mr. Eric Lindstrom when he designed our art park. Um, he had in there the concept of Before I Die. And we took that, um, with Ms. Schindlerman, and we, we changed it to say, let's do these, these little small murals where citizens can engage and write, "This building makes me feel." And so, I believe that's still in the works in coming up for citizen engagement. And just not too long ago, we took, uh, official action to engage citizens using the city spirit, um, facilitation presented by the USD, uh, DOJ. I also want to add that, um, I, I'm pretty much represent a generation that's pretty much gearing up, preparing to let their voices be heard. And I, and my hope, I hope it's purposefully and not destructively, right? But I am looking to this, and I hope I gather support for this motion. I'm looking for this to help them use their voices purposefully and progressively. So, tonight, my motion is to take list of suggestions surrounding relocation and repurposing of the Market House and engage citizens of Fayetteville using the US DOJ-proposed Citizens' Engagement Facilitation City Spirit with, to include council's action of using this model for racially charged issues in our community.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Ingram. As stated, is there a second? Is that a, uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, is that a second?
Before, okay, um, Councilmember Ingram, I'm sorry. Can you, can you repeat that? I caught a little-
It was I, I-
-wanting, and I, repeat your motion.
I can re, I can, I can repeat that. This, my motion is to take list of suggestions surrounding relocation and repurposing of the, uh, Market House and engage the citizens of Fayetteville using the US DOJ-proposed Citizen Engagement Facilitation City Spirit with the included council's action of discussing racially charged issues in our commu- community. And this is based off of action that we have already taken. And as I think the manager has stated earlier, and yourself, Mr., uh, Dr. Wade, these items here actually can be used to help bring facilitation. And as I go back to last year, when I said, speaking of Ann Atwater from Durham, North Carolina, when she branched out and did something dissimilar, this helped those citizens integrate schools. So, that, that is where I'm at with that. Thank you.
All right. So, just to recapture, uh, the motion was repeated, um, but, and so basically, just to make sure I understand it, you kind of incorporated things that we had already made action on, um, but so, and that would include receiving tonight's report, but implementing the community discussion through DOJ? Is that what you-
Yes, putting, putting it to the citizens.
Right, right. Okay.
Using what we've given action on.
All right. So, there's a, there's a, um, motion on the floor by Councilmember Ingram, uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, was that a second you had your hand up for, or question? If it's a question, I'll come back on discussion phase. Let me dispose, uh, move the motion along if there's a-
Yes, and just to be sure, and that's, that's also including the DOJ.
She, she included DOJ?
Investigating the DOJ, just for clarification.
Well, we're not investigating, but engaging them to assist with the commu-, with the city spirits. Is that what you're saying?
No, I would like the investigation. That's why I was asking her with that.
Can she explain what she mean by-
Well, we, we did, but you have a motion, so I, I have to have a second, or we, we have to dispose of it. Councilmember Waddell, are you her second, or is that a question?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay. So, is there a second to the motion? All right. Motion, motion dies for lack of a second. All right. Questions, uh, Councilmember Waddell, and then Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to this body. I, I think, um, as I expressed when the first motion came up, um, we, what I've heard from the community is, and, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing much of what I've heard, but this proverbial kicking of the can of making a decision. And so, my question to this board is, are we prepared to make a determination, one way or the other, if we're, if we're going to research, continue researching moving the Market House, or if we're going to move forward with giving our citizens an opportunity to have a dialogue about what repurposing looks like? And I will say, for, for the record and for the constituency that is listening, I have said from the beginning, and I continue to maintain, that it is my belief that the Market House should stand as a place of reverence and honor, much to Mr. Mr. Dawkins' credit, to the men and women, uh, the comment that you made earlier, to the men and women who were sold at that structure in, in slavery. And, um, it should be, it should be a place that tells the rich story and history of not only that part of, of the, the black experience in Fayetteville, but the black experience in general. Um, and so, for me, I would like to see a motion made, and am prepared to make one, that we move forward with the concept of repurposing the Market House, and that we hand that topic over to whoever the powers may be, if it's the Department of Justice or if it's our own Human Relations Commission, to further work with the members of our community to find out how we can do that in a way that will meet the needs of the most members of this community, because we won't please everybody. But we can most certainly produce a, a project, a project and a product that speaks to what many of our citizens are saying that they're asking for. And so, Mr. Mayor, barring any other, barring any other, um, questions on the floor, I would like to make that motion. And if it needs to be restated, I'd be happy to do that.
Second. I'll second that.
All right. All right. Hold on, hold on, counsel. Um, so, uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, if I understand it correct, is to instruct, um, more engagement in the repurposing and to eliminate the relocation? Is, can you repeat it for us?
That is correct. I make, I move that we authorize our staff to begin engaging with citizens in this community and for the option of repurposing the Market House and determining what the cost will be and what the scope of the project will look like with the assistance of our Human Relations Commission and the Department of Justice under the Spirit-
City Spirit.
City Spirit project that this council authorized us to participate in.
Okay. So, there's a motion, had a number of seconds, uh, but I do think Councilmember Ingram-
Yes, sir.
Give it to us all, sir. Because that's a good, that's a-
Uh, uh, okay. All right. Counsel, uh, we're, we're working off of lights. I try to catch the seconds as I can, but it, it, the lights are right here, and so, sometimes if I miss it, so I just want to make sure we have it right. But I'm glad everybody's eager to- so I just wanna make sure we have it right, but I'm glad everybody's eager to support this. So.
I have a question.
I'm coming, Councilmember, let me, let me get the second straight for the clerk. So there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, I think the second, according to lights, was Councilmember Wright, discussion. I'll go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Would you like to discuss?
I'll catch you after this. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Waddell, would you be willing to make a friendly amendment to allow the Department of Justice to do an investigation? Because one of the things we discussed before is trying to do a referendum, and I think that is unfair to not do what's needed as far as allowing the citizens to be a part of it. I think that the Department of Justice need to come and do an investigation because we are not doing or following the right protocol as far as allowing the citizens to have input in this decision-making.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, and I, to your credit, I do agree that it would, from the beginning, it would have been in the best interest for us to hand this over to our citizens and placed it on the ballot for a referendum. Unfortunately, when we brought that to the table, and I remember you being very supportive of that. Unfortunately, when we brought that to the table, we were not able to gain support for that. And I think that at every turn, when we've asked for that, it's been demonstrated that that was not the will of the entire body. And so at this point, based upon what I'm hearing back from a lot of, not only my constituency, but across the city, they're ready for us to just make a decision. And so I use the same analogy that I gave a couple of days ago. If you got chicken, beef, and fish on the menu, and everybody gets a choice, if I know I don't like fish, but I can tolerate chicken or beef, even if chicken is my first choice, I'm gonna go with beef if I know I can get the consensus for it. And so I am asking, I'm gonna stick with the motion, the way that it's, the way that it's posed, because I don't think that will gain support any other way. And I also don't understand, in completion, what you're asking for in terms of an investigation, but am more than willing to hear you out on a, on a second motion in terms of that. And should I understand it, and it be, you know, something that I'm agreeable with to vote on it?
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Thank you, Councilmember Banks. Before I go to Councilman Dawkins, I do, as this is a discussion phase about this, I wanna make sure that, that we're clear that because you're getting information doesn't mean that you're against having citizens make the ultimate decision. I'm not sure how you say, not you specifically, but how, how it said, we want you to take action and move, but we don't want you to move without talking to the citizens. It's like, it's, to me, I don't know how you do both unless you put it in some format. So I want the citizens who are listening to understand, the decisions we're making tonight, or at least if these motions carry, is to take this information and bring it to you with as much information and facts as we can. Okay, and so I don't want us to get caught up into that we're doing things without engaging you, or we're not moving it fast enough. It takes time to get proper, good information so that you can make it. And if it ends up on the ballot, it ends up on the ballot. But as I said before, with Parks and Rec, when we went to the ballot, we knew how much it costs, we knew what it looked like, and we knew how to explain it so that you could vote on it, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify the issue related to the referendum?
Yes.
Under North Carolina law, a referendum would not be permissible. North Carolina law sets forth what you can hold elections on. It's set forth in the state constitution, so a referendum would not be permissible.
For this?
If you have a referendum, if you were somehow able to get it onto the ballot, it would be non-binding. Remember, we had that discussion.
Right, I understand. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question, Dr. Wade. We're not paying you by the hour, are you? I hope not. Is this man on salary? Because he's gonna be working a lot of hours. And I wanna thank Council Lady Waddell for this motion, and she's right. We've gotta take this to our city, to our citizens, and Dr. Wade, you're gonna be the point person. You're gonna have to go to all the meetings, and then I hope your committee and some of us councilmembers will go to the meetings too, because we need to be listening. But what I've already heard is very impressive. I mean, the five things you gave us are excellent, but I can assure you, our citizens have more.
Sir, if I could speak to comment that the mayor made earlier, and the manager also made, specific to the City Spirit, conversations that I've been having with Mr. Lyons from DOJ, CRS, Community Relations Service. Mr. Lyons, in our conversations, the market house was part of that conversation. He, and the City Spirit model is designed in such a way that it, you can't do it without community engagement. The model drives community engagement, and per the direction of the council at the prior meeting, the Human Relations Commission has already accepted that charge. They will be meeting with Mr. Lyons when, when he returns at the end of the month, and they are ready to go to work, and the City Spirit model is something that they're already excited about and willing to serve as, in their role, as, per the ordinance, as the body who can move that discussion forward.
And my last question, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, if this motion passes, is your directive to develop a budget to determine how we go about this project of repurposing the market house for that square?
Yes, sir. There's a lot of stuff that staff has been working on, including Kevin Arada's team, to be ready to do this type of outreach, regardless of it. And so I think I would like to keep this in front of council, depending on your action. And so I'd like to be able to come back. I don't know if two weeks is enough time for your May work session. It may be on as an administrative report, so we can actually outline and start sketching this if the council moves and adopts this motion, so we could actually talk about the schedule with DOJ, but also to the, some of the other community engagement pieces. And, but yes, we're ready.
Yes, sir. Councilman Wright?
I just wanted to say, I think we're at a point where we have consensus on the council to move forward with repurposing, and I think from what I'm hearing, that removal is off the table based upon what we heard in this particular presentation tonight. And I'm ready to go forward, that's why I second this motion, because I think at this point, the citizens want us and eat and needs us to make a decision based upon the input of the citizens that I've been talking to. And I think that external committee, as chair of that, we went through the numbers. We went, we spent a lot of time, as you know, Dr. Wade.
Yes, sir.
With this process, and I think we're at the point now to do. And I believe this, this vote will not hinder citizens from being involved in the ongoing process of repurposing. Is that right?
That is correct, sir. Once again, City Spirit, by virtue of the model that it is, the market house was always gonna be a part of that as a, specifically, as we also dealt with the larger discussion of race relations in the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina. So all of that's part of that.
All that's a part of engagement piece. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Council, we have had a motion by Councilmember Waddell, it's been seconded by Councilmember Wright, it's been discussed. I'll look to you for action. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Brett.
Okay. All right, Adam Clerk, that motion carries nine to one. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. All right, thank you, Dr. Wade.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lindstrom. Looking forward to.
And leaving, I just wanna say again, a huge thanks to the working group. They did a live share, and I can't commend them enough. And my apologies, Mr. Dawes, he contributed a lot too, and sorry that his name wasn't on the slide.
Yes, sir.
They are all awesome.
Thank you. Item 7.02, Affordable Housing Study. Been waiting on this one. Mr. Colley, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So tonight, we're bringing to you the draft that the team and the community has been working on for our affordable housing plan. This was asked for by council and required by state law for cities the size of Fayetteville, for us to really grasp the market conditions that are driving affordable housing challenges in the community, and then help make a game plan of what we're gonna do about it. So we, we started a dialogue with the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments, and they recommended that we reach out to their colleagues at Triangle J Council of Governments up in Raleigh. Those folks have done several of these affordable housing studies in communities of various sizes all across the state. And so we were lucky enough to get partnered with Erica Brown and Catrice Hale, and they have led us through the process for about six months now. Today, in front of you, they're gonna have a very long document that we're not gonna go through page by page. They're gonna have a presentation and a one pager for you all to look at and reference. You guys have a lot on the agenda tonight. I've asked her to just kind of walk through it. Please stop her if you've got any questions, and we'll try to get to the end and have some discussion as quick as we can. So with that, I'll ask Maine to see if Erica is on, and she's gonna share her screen to go through the presentation.
Hi, can you guys hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and try to share the screen, so give me a second. It says the screen sharing is disabled. Can you try to enable it again?
Yeah, he's working on it. All right, try now.
Yep, seems to be working. Okay. Hold on one second. All right, do you guys see our notes, or? It's hard to tell.
We're looking at the, you need to flip the views to the presentation.
We have two monitors, so it's a little bit hard to be sure. I just did that right. So I should do it down here. Okay, let's try it again. Sorry about that. You'd think we would be better by now. Okay, how about now?
All right, so go up to the top and flip the display under Display Settings.
Thank you.
There you go. All right, take it away.
All right, so thanks, Chris, for the introduction. My name is Erica Brown. I'm with Triangle J Council of Governments. I'm our Housing Program Manager and have been with you all before, and this is Catrice Hale. She's joined us.
One second. Display this on the council, or do we need to share it on the laptop? They can't see it on their desktop.
Is there anything you guys need us to do to help with that?
No, just one second, please.
No problem.
Yes, thank you. We're ready now.
All right, sounds good. As I was saying, Catrice has joined us since the last time that we presented, and she is actually a resident of Fayetteville, so go ahead and let you introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Catrice Hale. I am the Planner Two in the Housing Division or Triangle J COG. Like she said, I am a resident of the city of Fayetteville, and I am happy to be presented with y'all tonight.
So we'll go ahead and get started. I'll hand it over to you, Catrice.
So tonight, this presentation will entail a review of the key housing needs and affordability gaps. We will discuss the stakeholder engagement and feedback, as well as a review of the goals and strategy to support housing in Fayetteville. So you had a presentation by Erica earlier, later in 2020, where she gave you a bunch of numbers, a bunch of data from our NICE assessment session. Today, I will be giving you some of the key trends from that session, including the city of Fayetteville has seen growth in both population and households over the last 10 years, 5.5% and 7.9%, respectively. But there's been a shift towards more low-income renter households. It's been a 21%, 21% increase since 2010. Jobs are growing in the Fayetteville region. You're seeing 4.2% growth since 2010. However, the majority of those jobs have been primarily in low-wage industries, such as childcare services, construction, as food servers. The third key trend is the housing production has drastically declined since 2010, constraining supply in the housing market. This is part due, this is partly due to a rush of construction about a decade, with real estate speculators anticipating the base realignment. However, overall, there has been a decline in the production of new housing from 2005 onward. With the decrease in supply, housing costs have continued to increase, particularly over the last couple of years. That being said, existing housing stock and recently permitted units provide limited housing choice and diversity in the city of Fayetteville. So what is affordable housing? HUD defines the income limits every year by geographic area. Most affordable housing programs or policies target households making 80% or less of AMI. But in some communities where housing costs are particularly high, they may go up to 120% of AMI, which may be considered workforce housing. The table below displays affordable housing payments based on fiscal year 2020 income limits. 80% of AMI for a family of four in Cumberland County is $46,500. They can afford a monthly rent of $1,163, which is approximately the house payment for a $200,000 home. For those around 80% of AMI or above, the market is providing housing at or around price points that are affordable. However, households at or below 60% of AMI are having a harder time finding affordable housing, particularly extremely low-income households. Housing is considered affordable if a household type, if a household pays no more than 30% of their income on housing costs, including rent or mortgage and utilities. If they pay more, a household is considered cost burden. This graph shows you the number of cost-burdened households broken down by household income and tenure. Households that earn less than $50,000 annually are considered low-income, meaning they are at or below 80% AMI. Every household that is cost-burdened is not living in a housing unit that is affordable to them if they, if they are paying more than 30% of their income. Therefore, the number of cost-burdened households is equal to the number of affordable housing units needed in the market. Overall, 69% of all low-income households are cost-burdened, and 75%, 75% of low-income renter households are considered cost-burdened. The biggest affordable housing gap is for households that earn less than $35,000 per year. 85% or more than $18,000 renter households making less than $35,000 are cost-burdened. This chart indicates the number of affordable rental units compared to the number of low-income renter households that are on the market, at or less than 80% AMI. As you can see, households less than 60% AMI, particularly those less than 30% of AMI, do not have a sufficient number of households affordable within their price point. Overall, there are 20,088 affordable rental units in the market, including legally binding and naturally occurring affordable housing units. In the last slide, you saw that there are an additional 21,255 cost-burdened low-income renter households. The market needs a total of around 41,000 affordable rental units or an additional 20,000-plus affordable rental units to serve low-income households. Note that there are a significant number of rental units that do provide options to people in the 60% to 80% AMI range. It's likely that households of lower income. It's likely that households of lower incomes may be renting those affordable units. However, the unit may not be affordable to that extremely low-income household. If more units were built at lower income levels, 30% to 60% of AMI, this would help reduce market constraints for renters of all incomes. Home ownership is also an important aspect of healthy housing market. Unfortunately, it is more difficult to collect data on, on home ownership than in rental market because of many factors that go into home ownership. However, if you remember from the last time we presented, we mentioned that housing market was overly, overall extremely constrained, including available owner-occupied households. Typically, a healthy and balanced housing market has between six to seven months of housing supply. At the beginning of 2021, there were 1.4 months of supply. There is a need overall to increase the housing supply for all types and price points. Stakeholder engagement and feedback. In an effort to garner information and feedback from the community, we utilized a housing study steering committee to identify existing needs and challenges, engage residents of affordable housing, community groups, developers, and city staff. The housing study steering committee also provided insight on strategy recommendations, local context, and best practices. We also held conversations with individual stakeholders such as PWC, United Developers, and the City of Fayetteville Development Services Department, just to name a few. Lastly, we held a community engagement session, session by way of Zoom on January 30, 2021. This meeting was facilitated by the steering committee and there was a good turnout with 51 community members and eight-plus community organizations participating. We had breakout sessions for the five affinity groups, including residents of affordable housing, developers, economic development, small business owners, landlords, millennials and seniors, and the general public. Notes from the community engagement session were compiled and consolidated into four main themes, which are providing education and training for clients of affordable housing that would look like personal finance management, basic home maintenance, assessing available supports and tenant rights, providing education and training for landlords, educating them on their responsibilities and rights, property management, process of accepting or rent subsidies in Section Eight, providing education and training for the general public, countering persistent stigmas associated with affordable and public housing, and as well as providing education and training for public-private partnerships, linking the community organizations, developers, educational institutions, and small businesses within the city of Fayetteville. The second main theme that came out of the community engagement session was there was a need for the increased number and diversity of affordable housing units. Citizens wanted a turn in of housing options. Tiny homes, essentially dwelling units. There's a need for transitional housing for special populations, preservation of existing housing stock, and/or repurposing abandoned, blighted, or historic buildings, providing developers funding and incentives to build affordable housing such as fast-track permitting, density bonus, tax credits, and tax abatements program. Another need that the community saw was the provision of safe, accessible, affordable amenities for housing developments. Communities were saying that they need adequate street lighting, sidewalks, broadband access, routine maintenance. There's a need for close proximity to medical facilities, laundry facilities, daycares, recreational parks, et cetera, as well as handicap accessible, accessible public transportation. The final main theme, sort of a catch-all main theme, was to address the rules and regulations that limit affordable housing at private, local, and state level. Addressing administrative and application processes to acquire housing. Residents stated that none of refundable fees are very costly. It's strategic, stringent qualification and income requirements, reducing regulatory barriers for housing developments such as storm-water management requirements, rezoning plaque reviews, fees, and time tapes. There were mixed feelings regarding whether taxes should be raised for public services, for public services such as the creation of affordable houses. Citizens were also concerned surrounding the type of tax that would be implemented if there was to be a housing bond or taxation, such as whether it be sales taxes or property taxes. Community, community members expressed a concern on the enforcement of the Fair Housing Act, the penalties and prevention measures for Fair Housing Act violations. Both the needs assessment and the stakeholder engagement provided the basis for the goals and strategies identified in this housing study.
All right, thank you so much, Catrice. So we're actually going to move on now to talking a little bit about those goals and their associated strategies. But as we transition to talking about those, I just want to remind folks that local governments do have a right to play a variety of roles in terms of supporting affordable housing and regulating it. So there are a spectrum of strategies that could range from, you know, educating the public, allocating funds, or other assets to address specific funding gaps, and then also being able to set regulatory standards that might be suitable for affordable housing development. So specifically, the four goals that we identified as part of the study are, one, and create, sorry, aimed at increasing awareness and access to housing resources. Two, increasing the number of affordable housing options. As Catrice mentioned before, it was a really big point when we did community engagement. Three, focus more on housing quality and preserving the existing affordable housing solutions that we have in our community. And then, four, ensuring that those community partnerships that exist, making sure that we continue to support them in order to create self-sufficiency for all residents that are a part of the city of Fayetteville. So we're going to go ahead and walk through each of the goals and then the associated strategies with them. And, you know, I'm sure you're going to have a lot of questions. There's a lot more information than what's on these slides. But happy to answer any of those, you know, during or after the presentation. So in terms of improving knowledge, awareness, and access to housing and resources, we obviously want to make sure that the existing resources that the city has to support affordable housing programs are easy to find, accessible, and in one place. So first and foremost, making sure that we develop those housing resources, engage with folks to know, to share with them, you know, knowledge about what already exists, and making sure that it's widely available on the city's website, share information with community partners who work with low- and moderate-income households in other ways, and then making sure whatever information you do create is accessible by being hard copy, not just online, accessibility in terms of other languages, and then also in affordable housing where there's a lot of jargon, so making sure that the information is very easy to read and accessible. The second goal we have, sorry, the second strategy we have under this goal is related to supporting community organizations. So right now, the city of Fayetteville does partner with various nonprofit organizations that provide a variety of supports to the general public, especially low-income households. We certainly support continuing that. In addition to that, and most importantly highlighted within this strategy, is trying to increase the partnership with the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority, so FMHA is how I'll refer to it. Specifically, there is an opportunity to create a tenant-based rental assistance program, and you can do that with federal home funds that the city already receives. And really, a tenant-based rental assistance program is a rental subsidy that entitlement communities like the city of Fayetteville are allowed to set up. This can use, it can be used to help individuals with their actual rental payments, which of course supports affordability that way. And the most common type of payments make up the difference between the amount of money that the household can afford to pay, so, you know, 30% of their income, and then what the actual fair market rent is for that unit. So we are suggesting that the city partner with FHMA, FMHA, sorry, to support the research and development of potentially a tenant-based rental assistance program with the federal funding that it already receives, and partner with the county's Department of Social Services and other local nonprofit organizations to really make sure that we're streamlining referrals for those and other existing programs as well. And the third strategy here is to engage with landlords. So definitely engaging existing landlords, potential landlords. You know, one of the comments that came up when we were doing our community engagement session was that, you know, one individual, she helped her daughter, she had a housing choice voucher, and she helped her daughter look all around the city one afternoon to find an affordable rental place with a landlord who would accept her voucher, and they didn't have any luck. We hear that from a lot of different communities that, you know, if the market is hot enough, they don't need to accept a rental voucher. But actually, during the pandemic, it could be a really reliable source of income for a lot of landlords. So it could be a really good time to try to increase that landlord engagement. And actually, we have one of our steering committee members who was a part of Worksboro, the Housing Authority, and she mentioned that the, the authority is currently working on creating landlord incentives to help with this issue as well. So it's a really good time to be working on this and also aligned with increasing the partnership with the Housing Authority mentioned in the prior stretch. Goal number two, definitely focusing on increasing the supply because of the constrained housing market, specifically the affordable housing supply, but also the supply generally. So 2.1, developing a housing trust fund, we see this as a priority in our recommendations, in part because it really sets up the ability for the city to create a policy to, to really guide the way that public investment is contributing to affordable housing developments. So depending on what the city is interested in, you can definitely prioritize funding for certain types of projects. And this, these guidelines are really helpful because local developers, they can clearly understand what the expectations are from the city. They see that there is a consistent funding source that they can apply for, so they feel comfortable coming, coming into maybe a new market. And then a couple of things about the trust fund is that traditionally, why these are really useful is because there is a dedicated revenue source that's supporting this funding mechanism. So that can come from a variety of revenue sources, whether that's, you know, general, general fund allocations on an annual basis. It could be through putting a housing bond, you know, on the ballot, increasing property taxes, and potentially even, you know, gathering funds from, you know, development fees that the planning or community development department has. The funds that you can provide through a trust fund could be in a low-interest loan or a grant that's really up to the jurisdiction to decide. And even though, you know, it takes a while to, to maybe decide on a dedicated revenue source, we suggest and have seen in other places, you know, several thousand dollars, around $500,000 for a city the size of Fayetteville, to really capitalize the fund and have that in there until you are able to decide what the dedicated revenue source is. But essentially, the trust fund is the, you know, the home that houses the guidelines and the policies associated with public investment. Number two, public land disposition strategy, also a priority in the short term. Coming in early, we heard that this was a priority for the city and for community development. They had actually already started considering looking at publicly-owned parcels for disposition. So what we're suggesting here is really kind of moving forward with that. You know, while you do have money, another great is land, and it's a crucial part of affordable housing developers being able to secure funding and, you know, be competitive for tax credits, et cetera. So in addition to that, staff might be interested in creating an annual request for proposals once you identify maybe some parcels that would be suitable. And in that way, you can also really guide the expectations of the type of development that you're going to be putting on previously publicly-owned land by having those expectations put forth in an RFP. And then, of course, you would sell the land for a nominal fee. You can't donate it, but you can sell it, you know, for a very low amount, and especially because it's going toward the public good, which is affordable housing. The third strategy here, land banking. So while land is actually still pretty reasonably priced within the city, it would be a good time to start thinking about identifying parcels, especially ones that might be close together to assemble for a larger project. And the point of that is really to make good on the fact that land prices are reasonable right now with the expectation that the city is going to continue to grow and the market is going to continue to be more, you know, unaffordable. So that really gives you all a heads up when, when the market continues to grow, just having that asset in your back pocket to do something like the public land disposition, as we said before. And it doesn't just have to be, you know, large parcels, you know, for low-income housing tax credits or multifamily properties. You can also find, you know, properties vacant, you know, individual parcels, small parcels for infill development as a way to incentivize infill housing later, which is another goal. So four, gap financing. So definitely not something new for the city. You all have been involved in this in the past, worked, you know, closely with United Developers and provided loans. So this gap financing is really important to continue. And that is in part because, you know, affordable housing revenue sources such as tax credits really rely on gap financing in order to close that gap and make it affordable. And so local governments are frequently looked toward for being able to do that. And if you want to be competitive to other types of affordable housing developers within the community, this is really something that they expect if, you know, because they can't really meet their margins without it. So that being said, other communities in North Carolina have provided between $5,000 all the way up to $25,000 per unit of subsidy in a situation like that. And that really depends on the level of income that you're trying to target. So of course, really low-income households are going to need more subsidy than just $5,000. And finally, 2.5, encourage affordable housing provisions. This is somewhat a nod to what you can do related to not mandatory inclusionary zoning. So inclusionary zoning, inclusionary housing is not something that we currently have access to as a tool in North Carolina because of state statute. However, it does allow for local governments to negotiate with developers when there is something that the city or local government is providing, such as a rezoning, a conditional use permit. If you're, you know, providing other types of approvals, this is definitely something that you can negotiate and put in a development agreement with the developer. That being said, there is a bill that has recently been introduced to the General Assembly that may allow local governments to enact inclusionary zoning policies. Not sure that that's going to get through, but just wanted to let you know that is a recent development over the last month or so. All right, so goal number three, focused on housing quality. So we have two strategies here. One is to leverage state preservation programs. So as you likely know, the city currently provides both an emergency home repair program for low and moderate-income homeowners, and there is also a housing rehab program that does not just emergency repairs. So the city currently funds that program through federal money. And the emergency housing program is done in partnership with a not-for-profit organization, and that's actually from state funds through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So the city could in fact apply to the Housing Finance Agency for additional funds that are really aligned with a moderate rehab program. So, you know, more than $10,000, but like around $30,000. And the city could certainly partner with a not-for-profit organization to run that program like they do with the emergency rental or emergency repair program. The benefit of this is that, one, you're accessing more funding and bringing more funding into your community for the same thing. And that means you can potentially reallocate some of your existing home partnership funds to other competing priorities, which honestly could be for supporting that gap financing we just talked about, because that is such a critical need. So 3.2 is creating a periodic inspection program. This is a little bit complicated only because it can cause potentially harm if you do not create the policy correctly. So that being said, what the policy can do is that it can help target code enforcement to specific properties that potentially continually get code enforcement violations or really have, you know, very hazardous code violations. or really have, you know, very hazardous code violation issues, minimum housing code issues. Instead of necessarily, you know, doing broad code enforcement that you would normally do. You can do both, but most of your code enforcement is focused on this. The benefit of that is that it really can target improving housing quality for residents. And a lot of times, these are also, you know, lower rent properties. And then the point that I wanted to mention that you have to be careful about is sometimes in creating these types of programs, low income homeowners are adversely affected. They might get code violations but don't have access to funding to amend them. And so because of that, they are in a really tough situation. So the one thing with this is making sure that you pair it with either your emergency repair program or a more substantial rehab program and really prioritize homeowners who are getting those code violations, especially if their health and safety, and just try to streamline them getting help while you're simultaneously, you know, working with landlords. And, you know, frankly landlords, once they know that this is the expectation and there are potentially some other landlord incentives, they're a lot more likely to, you know, proactively repair their properties than they might otherwise be. And then finally, number four, support self-sufficiency. So we have a variety of types of strategies in here that you might not think as self-sufficiency, but I'll explain why. First and foremost, location policy, also a priority and definitely can be targeted to work well with your housing trust fund policy so that developers or applicants can also be potentially eligible for certain types of fee reimbursements, you know, development fees. There's also potential for, you know, providing a grant to offset the cost of the increase in taxes that come from development, it's also possible. Why it's a location policy is because it specifically incentivizes proximity to things that you want a development close to. So resources, transportation, avoiding concentrations of poverty. These are all things that were really invested in and clearly the folks who participated in our community engagement session were really interested in. So this is just a really good policy that you could have in tandem with that housing trust fund policy. So we'll definitely focus on that. For the second one, supporting missing middle housing and infill housing, definitely this is focused on both reducing the few barriers there are and then also really providing incentives to support this type of housing. And basically, in terms of barriers, when we engaged with, you know, city staff and also I know Chris spoke with the Home Builders Association or several home builders at least, they mentioned that there really wasn't a lot of development barriers, which is great news. There are a few things you can always do, you know, reduce parking requirements, reduce some setbacks, allow for multiple ADUs on a property or, you know, making cottage courts or duplexes, you know, available as a buy right development in more zoning districts. All of those things are possible, and I know that staff, you know, have been focused on that in planning. The other half of that is providing incentives. So that's definitely something like supporting a grant or a loan program for either low income homeowners or property owners to create an ADU in their backyard. So that really is a wealth generation strategy. And then also, if you provide that public subsidy, you could also ask for it in exchange for renting the unit affordably. So that's both creating new affordable housing units and also leading to supporting self-sufficiency. The down payment assistance program, you all already have a program that does this. It is focused on city employees and prioritizes certain redevelopment neighborhoods. Our suggestion is to continue doing that program. It's, I believe, a $20,000 down payment. But if possible, expand it to other neighborhoods and make more than just city employees eligible for that if you have the funds. And then, last but not least, economic and workforce development. So here, really just continue using CDBG funding for economic development programs like small business development and retention or job skills training. And I wanted to mention and call out Pathways for Prosperity, which is a community coalition. You all are probably pretty familiar with them. And we think that they would be really well suited to facilitate these types of conversations, bringing different potential partners and resources to really focus on different ways that the economic development community can support self-sufficiency for low and moderate income households. And I want to give a shout out to Adam Spolto, who, and I believe, oh my goodness, she'll be on the next slide. I just blanked her name, but they were wonderful in supporting us on the steering committee as a part of Pathways for Prosperity. So that has been wonderful. The last slide, I apologize. We have one more between them. So in addition to all those strategies, we have some general recommendations for implementation, essentially making sure that you're increasing public awareness. It's a key to make sure that people know about resources, but it's also key to make people know about the needs. And we've hopefully been able to provide some information that helps share that with your community. Two, secure funding. Not all, but many of the strategies that we outlined within this study include some level of public participation, whether that's subsidy or land. And while the city currently does have a lot of federal money associated with affordable housing, you're definitely going to need additional funding in order to implement many of these strategies. That can be done in a variety of ways. There are additional funds out there. What I will say is, one way to secure additional funding is to provide public subsidy, and that really helps leverage, you can use that to leverage other funding, and it really helps unlock other funding, especially like, you know, philanthropic funding and things like that. Three, ensure staff capacity. I would be remiss not to mention that all of this takes, you know, time and effort to continually create programs and monitor progress. You know, we would love to have Chris and his staff do that, but I'm sure it's in addition to their already full-time jobs. So we're suggesting potentially that the city of Fayetteville create and fund a community and economic development compliance officer position, which would essentially be responsible for monitoring programs. And that includes, you know, local, state, and federally funded programs. Fourth, continue to coordinate and collaborate, both internally and facilitating communication between departments, especially for the goals where we identified both community and economic development in the planning department, and also coordinating with outside agencies to increase knowledge, access to resources, streamline processes, and improve outcomes. And then finally, last but not least, engaging the community. So this housing study and plan will need consistent support from both staff, elected officials, and then also really community members. You know, it's only going to be successful to the extent that it can be implemented and supported throughout the community. So we suggest creating something like a citizen advisory committee or an implementation task force that helps get some of these strategies off the ground. Even with the increased staff capacity that I mentioned before, if you hire somebody to help with compliance, community support is going to be key. So especially if you're considering potentially securing funding through, you know, a public funding campaign, like a housing bond, you're definitely going to need to engage folks early and frequently to make sure that this is successful. And one thing I didn't mention in this slide, but is really important to keep in mind, is the need to continually track and reassess the need of the community and make sure that whatever programs you create are flexible enough to change with needs and regulation as they change over time. So right now, we're asking you all to provide feedback so that we can incorporate any final edits into the study. We've been working with staff to do so as well, and obviously the steering committee. And then hopefully sometime this summer, come back to you with those changes made for you all to receive and adopt this housing study and hopefully the plan associated with it. And as I mentioned before, I called out a few names, but it's hard for me to remember them all. The steering committee was extremely influential in supporting this. They are folks from a variety of organizations, as you can see here. And they really helped us with not just supporting the community engagement, but also refining these processes and data. We obviously reached out to several community stakeholders, so we want to thank them. All of the city staff, you know, especially Chris, have been extremely generous with their time. And then obviously, thanks to you all, you know, clearly you have a lot of interest in this issue and want to support affordable housing, and this work could not be done without your taking initiative. So, you know, as affordable housing advocates, both Catrice and I, we really are excited to see what happens in Fayetteville. And with that, I will close, and Catrice and I are happy to take any questions. And I'll leave the presentation up just in case you need me to scroll back to anything.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Do have a light. I also, this has been a real interest of mine about affordable housing because it ties into so many pieces. So really appreciate it. This is a big report, so I know we'll probably have to read through it. And some of the things that kind of excited me was establishment of the housing trust fund, which I had talked to some folks in other communities that had that. So I'll read through it. Thank you for the presentation, and I'll go to other colleagues. But at the end of this, Mr. Manager, what type of action are you looking for? Just to receive the report or?
Yes, sir, Mayor. So like Erica said, we're looking for our next step to be to bring this back to you as a final for adoption. So based on your comments, feedback tonight, that'll give us some avenues to go down to explore. We're going to go back out and talk to P4P a little bit more. We're probably going to go to the Millennial Commission one more time and just kind of shop this around the community and then bring back the final.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, along those same lines, you and I have had a lot of conversations about this too. And so council members, if there are various tactics or strategies that you heard that you would like to pursue first, second, or third, it would also be helpful if in the coming days, if you have a chance to send those to Chris so that we can try to make sure that the final includes as many of those as early action or top priorities as possible.
So let me ask you a question to that point. And I know you may not have received all of the federal guidance for the recovery money. But being that rent and housing was a big part of what the government wanted to make sure was stabilized, have you heard anything from HUD about if any of that money can be used for any of this kind of activity?
Right now, not much has changed from when you got briefed, maybe a few, maybe last week.
Yeah.
We don't know a lot, especially around the $38 million that Fayetteville slated to get. We do know that an article came out pretty recently that we're going to get a couple million dollars in home funds, which is the funds that we get about a little bit less than a million a year already. So we're already at work identifying some needs for that. We've had a lot of folks that we normally partner with for affordable housing that asked for requests this year we weren't able to fund. So that money's going to go fast towards affordable housing production as well.
All right. Is the $6 million rental assistance money gone?
The $6 million rental assistance, you all approved the contract tonight for that. Tomorrow, we'll execute that contract with the vendor in 18 days. They should have a phone number and a website up and running, and yeah, that money's going to go quick.
Okay.
The American Rescue Plan does have an earmark, we're not sure exactly the dollar amount yet, for additional emergency rental funding.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. You guys did some great listening to whoever, you know, all that you talked to. You hit a lot of things that a lot of us said. I want to go to talk about some of our housing developments and the programs in which individuals can live in. We, and I think, okay, I see them still on there. If I am a certain age and I say I want to go live in Hope Six, in Hope Six, I can, I have to be low income, of course, but at the same time, if I get food stamps, that is considered income and is calculated with my actual income. So a lot of residents in my district that live in housing are struggling to get out of low income. And I believe it was Ms. Tammy Lawrence that said that there was some type of grant that they were seeking to be able to change the requirements, I guess, surrounding, you know, residents being able to grow. Because right now, they can't grow. If they're a student, they can only have a certain amount of credits to live in housing, and I get that. But when we talk about empowering residents and being able to grow to homeownership, I would like to know and just be confirming that that is something that is a part of this plan. Because I think I heard it, but I didn't hear it directly in terms of that being a sticking point for a lot of these communities that live in housing.
That's a great point, Councilmember Ingram. I do remember that Tammy Lawrence, who's on the steering committee, did bring up that they are working with, I believe, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program that does exactly what you were saying. It does allow for residents of, you know, public housing to be able to save with the goal of getting out of public housing. So I'm very happy to make mention of that within this report and also maybe note, you know, just continuing in the partnership with the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority. Any way that the city can support them in researching or creating that program is a great way to do that. But I totally agree. I'm glad that they're already working on it. And I know, you know, Tammy's a great resource, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. And secondly, I also want to add that I know you mentioned the Millennial Commission is circling back around to other partners. What I would also like to ask as we circle back is to engage our colleges and universities. Though students who come to Fayetteville, sometimes they don't have enough to live on campus. Most have to live off of campus. We have COVID, and some parents don't feel comfortable with students living in dormitories. So I would like to engage, of course, Fayetteville State University, Methodist College, and FTCC in this conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wright?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, Chris, and those that are working with you. Thank you for all of the information. It was quite a bit, but it wasn't anything that we haven't talked about, especially P4P and those pathways that we are big components of affordable housing, as you know. I have a couple of questions, and maybe you can help me. The young lady that's doing the presentation, I'm sorry, what? Give me your name again?
Erica and Catrice.
Erica and Catrice. Great job, ladies. You said 21% increase of low income housing. There's a 21% increase or in the last year? It has increased, the need has grown 21%? Is that what I heard?
So we can go back to the, hold on, maybe. I apologize. I don't know why.
And I guess this was speaking to the need of more affordable housing in our area?
Yeah, so I can specifically, hold on, it was at the beginning.
Okay, you said since 2010.
So it is since 2010, and that really, you know, overall, actually on your one pager, I believe, if you happen to have, I don't know what I did with it, but there should be some information on there too about the growth. So there's overall, you know, an 8% growth in households. But there has been a shift, you know, a little bit away from homeownership, and then also renter households, specifically low income renters have increased that amount during that time.
Mm-hmm. So and you mentioned also low wages. And I'm very excited to hear President Biden was talking about an affordable wage, $15 an hour. Some people don't think that's much, and for some, it's not. But for those that are struggling, that would change their quality of life, and I hope we can really take that serious. The next question would be, what does affordable housing look like for the future? And you talked about diversity of affordable housing. Can you talk about that diversity and what that looks like for the listening audience and for some council? That, what does that mean? And what does it look like?
So right now, a lot of folks, when they think of affordable housing or public housing or, you know, or, you know, low-rent housing, they think of basically, I mean, I'm from St. Louis and they would call them projects.
Right.
And that is very different than what we're seeing more now. In fact, most of the affordable housing that is created is created through the program Low Income Housing Tax Credits. And there are very stringent regulations related to the quality of those buildings. They often have to be, you know, in opportunity areas. So they're not necessarily, you know, segregated in terms of areas of concentrated poverty or areas of concentrated race. They are, you know, frequently in that situation, that's going to be a lot of apartment buildings. That's really, you know, that, that's the size of the building that needs to be in order to make the profit margins. Well, not even the profit margins, just meet, you know, the gap between the rent and how much it costs. So most of it is going to look like that. However, when we talk about diversity, you know, instead of, I think the last time when I presented, I showed, you know, new building permits by housing type. And the vast majority of new units being built is single-family homes, you know, attached or detached, and large apartment buildings. And there is an ability to have, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, small apartment buildings, cottage courts, accessory dwelling units, all of these things that might fit within the fabric of a single-family neighborhood that increase density. And because they are smaller unit sizes and often are multiple units on one piece of land, the cost to develop those is less, which makes them more affordable. So we're talking about that generally is these different types of housing. Definitely, definitely different price points. As you saw, you have a vast need for extremely low-income housing. And that is probably going to continue to be your public housing. Because frankly, that's the only type of resource that can afford it. However, you know, your housing authority has been really great at pursuing the RAD program, the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program through HUD, which does have the ability to make a public housing property mixed income. And that is new, you know, in terms of the RAD program. But that could look, you know, very different than just like your traditional public housing. So that's kind of the range of things. I hope that answers your question.
That really did. And we're talking about, when you talk about affordable housing, sometimes, and you mentioned the projects, and sometimes if we're not careful, we can put all affordable housing in, in a one district. But when you're talking about diversity, you know, you want to spread out. And then the way it looks, it doesn't look like, you know, oh, that's affordable housing over there, you know? It should blend in as to the vision of how we want our city to look, you know, going down the future. So that was one thing that we're excited about. The next thing is, the mayor mentioned the Housing Trust Fund, a dedicated revenue source. And, and I'm very interested in that as well. And I wanted to point out, because of the increase of the importance of affordable housing, and the council know as well, when we take care of our citizens, we're taking care of our city for the future. And so I, I, I really want to look at the trust fund and what we can do as a city to assist these projects. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Kinston?
Ma'am? So it was Redmond Council? Okay, I thought you just hit it twice. I was like, why does she always hit two buttons? All right. Okay, so it looks like we covered all questions. So from here, just to recap, you will be returning with some information that we'll formally adopt this? Or you need a formal adoption tonight?
No, tonight's about introducing it. I think the mayor's, the manager suggested shooting an email to myself and Dr. Whitfield. Let us know if you've got any feedback, especially items that you see as priority. We'll definitely incorporate that feedback into the final and we'll bring a final back for adoption in a few months.
All right. Sounds good. We appreciate you all. Thank you, Wake County Cod, for your assistance. Great job, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Council item 7.03, an update on the Day Resource Center. Is that you, Mr. Hewitt, or Mr. Collin?
That's me again.
Long time no see.
Yes. So I might need Gavin's help here because we're going to bring up the presentation on the screen. Is it just, just go like this? All right, perfect. All right, so tonight, in the interest of time, I'm going to walk through our presentation. I've got a very, very, very short, brief one here. But I also have on the phone with us tonight, Mary and Bill from the North Carolina Office of Resilience and Recovery. They're here to answer any questions once we get through this. But I just wanted to walk through a little bit of a timeline and where we're at as of April with this project. So first off, we've had a lot of questions about where the money's from and what that looks like. And so this money is coming through HUD, through the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. And, and a lot of what we've been talking about tonight with affordable housing is Community Development Block Grant as well. But this is a separate one, focused on specific disasters. The money was then given to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. And that's where INCOR, the North Carolina Office of Resilience and Recovery, administers that program. Then we are a sub-recipient of that money. So originally, this funding was, a sub-recipient was the county. And then about a year and a half ago, we, we stepped in and took over that agreement. And then from there, if we contract with anybody to do design, construction, anything like that, those folks would be just contractors or consultants, engineers, just like any other capital project. So we're the sub-recipient, you know, the grantee, HUD's the rulemaker. There's a lot of federal regulations. I can't say that enough. There's a lot of federal regulations. We're not going to go over everything involved. There, there's, I mean, we'd be here all night. But there's three of them that I wanted to point out because that really is driving the timeline for this project. So the first one is called the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. It's also URA. It tells us how we go about acquiring real property using federal money. And the idea behind it is 100% driven by protecting the property owners from governmental overreach. So this is about making sure that somebody who owns property and is interested in selling, that the government is having their interest in mind when federal government, federal money's involved. The next one's Environmental Review. So just a few minutes ago, we talked about and used the word projects. When we talked about affordable housing and what that looks like. HUD recognized a long time ago that sometimes federal money to build low-income housing or to, to do federal programs using HUD would tend to happen in areas that other folks might not want to build in. So they instituted 24 CFR 58, which is the environmental review process that says if you're going to be in a flood zone, how are you mitigating it? If you're building on a landfill, how are you taking care of that? If you're building beside train tracks, how are you making sure people don't hear the trains all night? So these two things work in concert with one another. The order of operations for acquiring the property and then whether you're acquiring property in a safe and respectable manner with regards to environmental regulations. Then on top of all of that, there's the Uniform Administrative Guidance, which is also called the Uniform Guidance. And that tells us the steps that, that my, my department, along with transit and several other federal-funded things, work with ChemToon and purchasing to make sure that we follow the right steps when we acquire contracts, put things out to bid, and procure goods. So just a little bit of a closer look, I'm not going to dwell on this because I took a little screenshot off of a website that is like 14 pages long. So just to give you an idea of the Uniform Relocation Act, the, the high points are it provides uniform, fair, and equitable treatment of people whose real property is being acquired by government. It says you need to appraise the property before you negotiate. You invite the owner to accompany the appraiser during the property inspection, provide them with written offer of just compensation and a summary of what's being acquired. You pay for it before you take it and you reimburse any expenses resulting from the transfer. So those are the core components of the Uniform Relocation Act. Environmental review, I'm not even putting the words on here because it is, it is very dense. But, but we put together a little kind of eye chart to show you. So basically with environmental review, you've got to tell HUD what the project is. You've got to determine what, based on HUD's rules, are the level of review for the project. Then you do an environmental review. You finalize it. You spend the project funds and then you come back and say, did, did in spending the project funds, we comply with the environmental review? Having said all that, some activities that are done on the front end are exempt from the environmental review. You don't need an environmental to say, hey, we're trying to figure out where we want to buy property. You need an environmental when you figure out what property you're buying. You can't take choice-limiting actions, which means that we can't decide something that binds HUD to, to a decision and then come back and say, oh, now we need to do all the regulations that HUD required. We have to make sure we do the regulation part first. Depending on the level of project, the environmental review is different. My team does environmental reviews all day, every day. For every rehab we do, every business that we assist, we do an environmental review on those. When you're acquiring real property and doing something like what we're doing with the Day Resource Center, it's a different scale. Some require a public hearing and a comment period. So let's say we were to find an environmental issue on a site. It requires a 30-day pro, comment period and a statement to the public that says, we're spending federal money, this is what's going on, and we think it's okay. And the public has an opportunity to comment on that. So that's the regulations involved. Who is INCOR? So INCOR was created back in July of 2019. And the idea was to centralize processing for CDBG, for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. The idea is that this one group of superstars in, in the disaster recovery field would be able to handle a lot of the disaster-related things that happen. We couldn't have predicted that COVID would have happened at that time, but luckily for us, INCOR was already set up at that point. So I want to go over a brief timeline. I will tell you that as I sat down and put this together, you're going to see over the next three slides that every month since the summer and fall of 2019, we have made real significant project, progress on the Day Resource Center. So in the summer of 2019, INCOR got control of the money. In the fall and winter, they went out to all of their sub- recipients, all the cities and counties that they're working with and executed agreements. December 17th, Fayetteville executed their agreement. We then put out in January an RFQ for an architect. In March, early March, we had our first technical assistance class. So this is when INCOR pulled all of the cities and counties that it gave money to together and said, this is how this stuff is supposed to go. Make sure you don't go sideways on any of these federal regulations. Again, in March, we selected that architect that we put out at, at the end of January. April, we brought in a consultant who did a lot of community engagement with not-for-profit partners, community service providers, the public at large, and with our homeless population to determine what services and things would be used in a Day Resource Center. So from there, we started building the idea. So, so we did those focus groups. We came up with what needed to be done. The architect took all of that input that council looked at back, back in May and said, this is what space you would need and this is how you would kind of orient that and how much square footage you would need. So taking that information, we went out and looked at available sites. So we found several sites, brought some of those back to council. Council said, we like this one best, go look for it. We took that to, to, to our technical review committee and our planning and development. They gave us feedback to make sure it was feasible from there. In October, we had secured the right of entry for appraisal. So again, going back to that Uniform Relocation Act where we have to communicate with the, with the owner in writing every step of the way. The owner, the next month, gave us the signed document back. From there, we, we did our informal bid for appraisal. So we had to go out and get a handful of appraisers to tell us how much it would cost to do the appraisals. In December, we awarded them. We also at that time came forward with a text amendment, Dr. Newton's team, to define a Day Resource Center. That was a step that was required in order for us to move forward with this project. In January, now that that had been done, the, the scope and budget of the project was officially approved by INCOR. I remember we all took a moment and just kind of breathed a sigh of relief and celebrate that that major milestone had happened. In January, the architect, IBI, submitted a full architecture and engineering agreement. And so the folks at INCOR have now been reviewing that agreement to make sure it's in line with all of those federal regulations we talked about. In February, we got those appraisals done. We sent those out to INCOR to look at. INCOR came back a week or so later and said, here's an, here's a package of paperwork for you to acquire and, and begin the negotiation with the buyer, with the seller. Later on in March, just a few weeks ago, the seller accepted our contingent offer. At this point, that offer has to have that environmental review we talked about and then come back to council. And council says, yes, we're okay with that and we're moving forward. So the contingency is on the environmental review and council's approval. As of April, just a week or so ago, the seller agreed to a six-month exclusive option. So we now have the seller under contract to work with us for the next six months while we get some of those regulation processes done. And we're not concerned about any type of competition for the property during that time. So what happens next? As I mentioned earlier, all activities up until now have been exempt from the environmental review process. They pretty much fill out a sheet of paper that says, you're good to do this one activity. Come back to us when you get deeper into the project. It's been a little slow based on that other regulation, that Uniform Relocation Act. But we, we've moved pretty quickly. And my friends on the phone are, are going to tell you that we're, we're frontrunners in the state right now for projects on real property acquisition. INCOR now does that environmental review. We've got a six-month option on the property. We hope that it will not take six months. But with all of the federal programs that are coming down, the Day Resource Center is being impacted by additional funding in response to the CARES Act. INCOR eventually finds that if there are mitigating environmental factors that need to be fixed, we'll scope that into our budget. If there aren't, then we'll do what's called a FONZI, which is a finding of no significant impact. That means that there's no impacts on the property. And council, when I first learned about this stuff, I just, FONZI was stuck in my head for so long. I just couldn't get over it. I, I grew up watching Happy Days. So then ultimately, council's going to approve the final opera, offer on the property before that option expires. And then at the same time, we're going to award a full design contract to an architect. They're going to produce that design and we're going to go to bid. So that's pretty much where we are with the project now. I've got Mary and Bill on the phone from INCOR. They're happy to answer any questions that I might not be able to answer. But we wanted to make sure you all are up to date on where we are.
Pretty thorough report. Councilmember Ingram?
Actually, he just rounded, answered my question in the what's next.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Wright?
Just for clarification, Chris. On the property and doing the environmental study, maybe those acronyms or those words of defining whether we have purchased the property, own the property, have come into an agreement? Because once you do the environmental and it doesn't, if something happens where it don't work out, where we can use that piece of property, what happens at that point?
Yeah, so right now, we have that, that option on the property, so we have not actually purchased it. So the environmental will be conducted before we purchase the property. So if, if worst-case scenario, something were to be found on the property that would be a, a budget nightmare to try to remediate, we'd have to go to one of our other properties that we had on our list from several months ago.
Okay, great. That's what I'm trying to figure out if we have to find, because we have properties already lined up if this don't work out. And so the owner gave us six months. That's what that six months is for?
Yes, sir.
As an option. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
All right. So hello to your guests. What's their names, Chris?
Mary Glasscock and Bill. I don't know if we got Bill turned on. I might have to go over here and help me find him.
Mr. Glasscock, can you hear us?
I can, here you will. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for joining us this evening. We've, we've kind of jumped on the city manager from time to time, wanting to know why this, this process moves so slow. It seems like it's been several years. But I know Chris has given us a pretty thorough recap as to where we are. But has INCOR done many of these type projects that Fayetteville's applying for, for the Day Center? And are, would you say we're keeping a, a normal pace or what would you say we are?
Your pace is a little bit slower. And I can explain that simply because this project used to be under the auspices of the county. It was not a standalone project for the local government. And then it was determined, there's Bill. Bill Blankenship is the subject matter expert for the CDBGDR program that INCOR on-boarded, on-boarded to work with me as infrastructure manager. So when we, when we modified the sub-recipient agreement or the contract, we didn't start over. We knew you were going to have the funding there. The trigger really had to do more with the fact that we changed locations. And as Chris illustrated in the PowerPoint presentation, the change of location put us not back to ground zero, but we had to go through two things because HUD does not allow us to purchase a property for any kind of an activity unless the environmental review is, unless the property is prepared to go for environmental review, which means two things. One, we had to have the property identified. And that took place, I believe, around And that took place, I believe, around November of 2020. And then the next thing that had to happen was an appraisal, and HUD requires what's called a review of that appraisal. So you have to have, not really redundancy, but you have to have somebody, you got to have your right hand checking your left hand. So that occurred in January of 2021, or February of 2021, perhaps. And then the negotiation for this newer property began in, I think, early March. And pretty quickly, toward the end of March, that's when the option was determined. There was a contingency to purchase. And I believe that it was based upon a successful negotiation. Fayetteville was successful in their negotiation. The ERR is underway presently because another thing that has happened, and I have to commend the city of Fayetteville for being so on their game. And I mean that, what I mean when I say that is that we've had the illustrative drawings that are required. The firm that was onboarded has done an excellent job. We understand where the land disturbance is going to be for this particular building. We understand what is adjacent to the building. For example, you have a gas station that was proximal to the building at some point in the past, or perhaps still presently. I haven't looked at the notes on that one recently. But I also know that the environmental, so understand that the environmental review folks have everything they need to move forward. It is going to be, of course, as all environmental reviews are, whether it's a HUD project or a FEMA project, it's going to be stringent. It's going to look at historic and environmental potential issues. But we're going to work toward that Fonzie, as Chris said. And we don't anticipate any particular problems at this point. The ERR again is underway, and we have provided our ERR team, our environmental review team, the drawings that they need to understand exactly where that land disturbance is going to occur.
Well, thank you. And let me know if Doug pays you for trying to, so. But I do have a couple of questions. Have Councilmember Ingram, well, Wright, Ingram and Davis.
Yes, my question has already been answered, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. And I forgot her name, Mark Goldstein?
Mary Glasscock.
My apologies, my apologies. Ms. Glasscock, so, you know, I thank you first, Mr. Carley, and both of you for this timeline. So just, just, just so I can ask, and the listening audience can know, this body, the manager or city attorney, are not purposefully holding this up. There are loopholes that we had to pretty much slip to and get approval for to make this happen. And clarification, that's what we heard tonight. Is that right?
I wouldn't use the word loophole. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry. Give me the right word.
That's okay. That's okay. There are extremely extraordinarily stringent regulations when HUD projects come into, when HUD funding comes into play. And quite frankly, the reason I commend the city is because you've had the experience with these sorts of things. We have great many local governments that don't have a lot of capacity. And you all have done things the right way. So it has been the extremely stringent requirements, particularly with environmental and historic preservation reviews.
Thank you so much. And for the listening audience that did not just hear that, we at the city of Fayetteville, the Can Do City, do things the right way. And so when we get this Day Center, we're going to do it the right way. So that's what's taking so long. We're doing things the right way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Councilman Davis.
Just two questions. So what's the standard timeline for a project like this?
Bill has worked in New York. And one of the reasons that I've asked him to join is because he has a variety of different experience that I simply don't have at this point in my career. So I'm going to defer to Bill on that one.
Good evening, council. Glad to be here to speak with you all this evening. To answer the question, there is no standard. I have seen, I have done seven of these in the last 10 years. I have seen them go from a matter of 11 to 12 months to get a shovel into the ground on a brand-new facility to three to four years, depending on the state you're in, to rehab a facility. This one is running far ahead, and I should not neglect to say that when it comes to the URA process, we've been discussing that the staff with the city have been extraordinarily helpful and responsive. The typical time to purchase a property such as this for the purpose that we want it typically runs 11 to 12 months. The city was able to enter negotiations and identify the property and enter negotiations and come up with an option to purchase within three, three and a half months. And that's extraordinary. And it's to their credit that they were able to accomplish that.
The other question is environmentally. Are the issues with the environmental, or the environmental challenges based on its proximity to the gas station? Or is this a standard environmental review? Is it the same for if it was a new construction in open field? Or is it because the location is near a gas station?
They will, they will make a check to see if there's any contamination, contaminated materials in the ground adjacent to the community center, including the gas station area. So far, we have not received a definitive answer from the environmental team concerning whether there is site contamination in there, or its extent, if any.
Contamination also, if we could, does not necessarily mean that if there is contamination, it doesn't mean it can't be remediated. For example, if you think about any kind of a project, any kind of building project that's been funded in any urban area, there may be asbestos, there may be lead, there may be certain types of contaminants with, we in North Carolina are most familiar with FEMA and then HUD money. And that is not to say that if there's an issue, that it cannot be remediated.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ingram, you all ready? You good? We had two lights on, so I don't know if they count. All right. Well, we thank you all for the update. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, did you get what we needed? She's, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Carley. Thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Item 7.04, Mr. Valdez, is this on you, sir? All right.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. I'm quite excited to get this presentation as soon as I find it.
All right. My name's Alicia Moore. Planner 2 Development Services, Division Planning and Zoning. This has been before you, previously on March 22nd. And the review was postponed for today to address some concerns raised at that meeting. So this presentation has been expanded to incorporate those concerns. And essentially, there's two issues presented. One is whether to adopt this amendment for a food truck court. And the second is which version to adopt. All right. So again, going to try to do this real quick. The amendment would create a new principal use category of food truck court as a type of permanent eating establishment. It would be in addition to the existing permitted use as an accessory, meaning that vendors could choose which way they operate, as an accessory use under those standards, or as a principal use under these standards. Accordingly, code enforcement would have two sets of regulations to apply, depending on the use. And to zoom out and look at a lens to view this issue, we need to remember the city's government interest and legal obligations for zoning regulations. Under the law, zoning regulations must be designed to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. We create development standards that are aimed not only at promoting a safe experience for a diverse community, but also an enjoyable one. It creates a sense of hospitability that is welcoming and compatible with surrounding conditions. The regulations are enforced through inspections from code enforcement in conjunction with other departments like stormwater and building inspections. So at the last meeting, we did cover the economic importance of the growing food truck industry. So I'll just say that the importance has been noted by organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, American Planning Association, universities such as Harvard, as well as local newspapers and individual residents seeking to get involved. Under current regulations, food truck businesses and would-be businesses face regulatory roadblocks that have restricted or altogether prevented them from operating in Fayetteville. In addition to the applicant, Mr. Sheridan, we've seen an increasing number of residents attempting or seeking to establish food truck businesses. But under the current regulations, which allow food trucks only as an accessory and necessarily temporary use, food truck courts aren't possible. Food truck vendors face much tighter restrictions than other eating establishments, including a greater limitation on where they can operate, their hours, whether they can have seating at all, and greater restrictions on signage. Further, they have an additional hurdle of securing permission from a private business owner since food trucks are not allowed to operate on lots of their own. So the proposed amendments treat food truck courts similarly to other eating establishments. The applicant's proposed Haymount Truck Stop was featured in a widely-shared article in the Fayetteville Observer as the city's first food truck court, noting that an amendment to city code was necessary in order to move forward with the plans. The plan center on a collection of food truck courts, sorry, a collection of food trucks on the same lot with outdoor seating. The lot located in Haymount, right where Morganton becomes Hay Street, is close to the downtown district, thus expanding the draw there. Mr. Sheridan submitted an application with the proposal and worked with staff from various departments over the course of several months to develop the proposed ordinance. The standards in that ordinance are aimed at that goal of promoting the general public welfare. As I'll explain in a bit, there are three versions of the ordinance. The original submission by the applicant, the staff-proposed version, and a third version with reduced standards. So, okay, existing regulations compared to the proposed ones. Again, if the proposed amendment is adopted, it won't alter the existing regulations for accessory use. It would be in addition so that we would have both. The vendors could choose which set better suits their business. Existing regulations, food trucks are allowed only as a temporary use, either during city-approved special events or as an accessory use. As an accessory, a vendor couldn't develop a lot to suit their businesses. You necessarily have to do it in a lot that was designed for a different use, using their extra parking spaces. And whether a parking lot has extra spaces, this question has nothing to do with whether they are actually being used. Like if a business had unfilled spots and wanted to supplement their revenue, that wouldn't work. Instead, the question is whether the business has paved more lots than the required regulatory minimum. So we still have an abundance of paved concrete and unused parking spots. Seating, which must be completely removed each day, is only allowed on lots greater than two acres. Food trucks, food trucks face separation requirements far beyond other eating establishments, which are not restricted in proximity from each other. You could have a fast-food restaurant right next to a fancy steakhouse. And separation from residential districts is also less stringent. And going to briefly go over what food truck courts are, that they create an entirely new type of permanent business that wasn't contemplated or allowed here before. It generates attention for investors, draws outdoor crowds, and stimulates economic and social activity. It can be run by a single vendor, a group of vendors, or even a separate developer who then works with the vendors. This picture here is a food truck court in Boulder, Colorado. Like regular restaurants and transient food trucks, you can pop in for takeout. And they're also an actual destination for gathering and socializing. As a principle, instead of accessory use, the parcel has development standards, specifically meant for food truck courts. Unlike transient food trucks, the courts operate more like a brick-and-mortar restaurant, a permanent fixture that has food trucks at the center of its business plan. And because they operate like traditional restaurants, they require regulations more like regular restaurants. I mentioned earlier, there are three versions of the proposed ordinance. The original submission by the applicant, the one developed by professional staff, and a third with reduced standards. The staff-proposed version was developed in collaboration with the applicant and staff from several departments. It includes development standards, includes development standards meant to balance business interests and promote the general welfare goal. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. And the third version reflects concerns about those restrictions imposed in the staff-proposed version. So it just has the minimal standards, except for basic fire, safety, and environmental protections. There would be no opportunity for site plan review and no zoning permit required. The staff-proposed ordinance is based on policy recommendations from those esteemed organizations and modeled on codes of cities that have implemented similar regulations for groups of food trucks. We picked through these cities' regulations for their most suitable aspects and combined them with Fayetteville's existing regulations for outdoor eating establishments. So these are the proposed regulations for that staff-proposed version. Food truck courts would be allowed in non-residential zones with a special use permit required for neighborhood commercial zones. And since they function like typical restaurants, they would be subject to similar standards. There would be site plan review by the technical review committee to assure initial compliance with the standards, including running water and electrical hookups, bathrooms that comply with the Americans with Disability Act, proper waste control and stormwater protections. A zoning permit would be required to verify continuing compliance, including verification of registration with Cumberland County and proper insurance. There's a range of benefits for this use. Again, going to talk as quickly as I can. There's increased opportunities for food truck businesses and other businesses that want to partner with the food truck vendors. For vendors, it gives them more choices in how to operate. Currently, their only choice is as an accessory in someone else's parking lot. And if that works for the vendor, that's fine. They can continue doing that. But with the principal use category, they'll be coming from more options. The developer of a food truck court could be an individual food truck vendor, or it could be a group of vendors, or it could be a separate business that makes the investment to develop the parcel and then partners with the vendors, like tenants, so that the vendors can use the parcel while keeping their own costs down. This creates a new type of commerce and way for businesses to invest in communities while expanding the choices available for food truck vendors. It also creates a new option for social outings while being outside. So before getting to the options and recommendations, I want to bring up an email that Mr. Sheridan, the applicant, sent out to council yesterday. And I'm just going to touch on it very quickly. Mr. Sheridan urges council to vote in favor of the staff-proposed version, pointing out that businesses require standards and that the staff version is based on months of research, including other cities' successful regulations. He points out that the planning commission supports the staff version and that the reduced standards version leaves out several important requirements. For the requirement of electrical outlets, the applicant notes that multiple generators, which food trucks would use without the electrical outlets, would generate tremendous noise and harmful exhaust pollution, which was also a major concern for the planning commission. For restrooms, that restrooms and places to wash your hands are a matter of public health and that it's a basic requirement of other eating establishments within the city. Garbage receptacles are also a matter of public health. Parking services and site plans, without them, it would basically mean that a food truck court would not be required to make any improvements on a lot. And that that would create an unfair advantage for fly-by-night companies to profit while neighboring businesses have to develop to the standards, except by the UDO. And that a version that does not include sufficient development standards is not helping to improve the city, but instead is incentivized. to improve the city, but instead is incentivizing food truck courts to profit off of unimproved areas of the city. Options and recommendations. The options to approve would be for any one of the three versions: the applicant-submitted version, the staff-proposed version, or the reduced standards version. Or denial of all of them, revisions and adoption of any of the proposed amendments, or remand of any of them back to planning, back to planning staff for further consideration, back to planning commission for further consideration. Staff recommends approval of option two, the staff-proposed version, because it adheres to the city code, it is modeled after successful regulations, it includes recommendations from professional staff at an interdepartmental level, is supported by the applicant, and it was recommended unanimously by the planning commission. Note that this ordinance would be only for food truck courts and that staff will conduct further review of the industry for single food truck alternatives. So again, we have the options on the left and the recommendation on the right.
Thank you. Do have a couple of questions for you, Councilmember Hare Dawkins and Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. When, when I had this item tabled, it was not so much concerns surrounding this particular applicant. I've talked to a few councilmembers and, and I think I've talked to the applicant and a couple of other folk even just today. What my concern was, was, which was way before this one, this, this application came before planning and zoning, was how do we help those food truck vendors that want to set up a food court? And they do not have a permanent structure? But they will break down the business every day and leave the lot. Of course, they have permission for the lot. I mean, there, there are a lot of your ordinances that are given to us, I'm 100%, I'm totally behind. But I've had those that tried to start a food court, but because it was a number of things. It was something wrong with, about the sign, and then there was, there's not a permanent structure. And it just went on and on and on. But a lot of that was because we didn't have any ordinances, we didn't have really any policies. So I have nothing against this applicant. I'm not pushing back against this applicant. But how do we help the ones that I'm speaking of now? And you just stated, this has nothing so much to do, for example, with a single food truck, which we see them in various locations of the city. So that's, that's another, you know, that's, that's gonna be another situation that we're gonna have to deal with if that comes up. So what my concern is, Mayor and council, is how do we support those food truck that want to, food trucks that want to come together and set up, but not have a permanent location? Prime example, right there at Fort Bragg, at just, as you pass Santa Fe to the Fort Bragg limits. There was a, a food truck vendors trying to set up there, but the issue was, they did not have, there was not a permanent structure. Of course, also you were saying that there were no electrical systems for them. And, and if you don't have the permanent structure, it's not saying you can't have the bathroom, but I, I know that a permanent structure would provide a bathroom. So those are what my, those are what my, my concerns are, are, and how do we help them? I don't know if, I didn't see that in here. I didn't see that in the, in the, in the cam. I didn't see what you had.
As you, was that some question that you could answer now, or can I get to a couple of more questions that have lights on?
Well, it, it would be up to you. I'd be happy to, to address that, or can take more questions.
All right, if you can quickly answer Councilmember Hare's question.
First, the accessory use would still, would still be allowed. So if you did have that permanent structure, then you wouldn't need to comply with the need for permanent bathrooms or electrical sockets, running water. Also, a, a single truck would be allowed as a food truck court if, if that's what they wanted. It's also possible for a single vendor or multiple vendors to partner with another business. If you had, if you had somebody who wants to make the investment, like, much like a landlord, landlord would do, who doesn't necessarily want to live in a building, but wants to create a building, establish a building for, for tenants, you could do a similar thing there. Also, if the regulations, you know, you were, you were saying before that we didn't have a, a clear-cut set of rules for food trucks as a principal use. And if we did here, then vendors would be able to know the regulations ahead of time, so they wouldn't, you know, get caught up in this, "I started and now I'm not sure what to do" thing. And finally, if, if the idea is that we wanted to create perhaps an exception that somewhere in between these two, where we just, for just single food truck vendors, then that is certainly a possibility that, that staff could look into and do the research for as a separate ordinance in addition to this one for food truck courts.
And once again, and, and thank you. Once again, I want to kind of stay on point exactly on what's come to me. I'm pretty sure there are a lot more questions and we'll probably hear more different viewpoints. But if you have three or four food trucks, they're, they're wanting to partner with each other, they're wanting to partner on the acreage that is stated in your proposal, you know, they're gonna, I guess it was two acres, whatever they...
The, the, the only size requirement would be so that there would have to be enough space between the, the vendors themselves to allow for safety, but there's no minimum acreage.
So they, they get in, you know, they, they set up. How do we help them? That's my question. How do we help that group? And I know we may not get the answer tonight, but how do we help that group?
Yeah, 'cause we got a couple more lights here, Councilman.
Okay.
So, so, 'cause I see he's about to probe down into this thing, so. But can you, can you provide some of those details maybe to him and maybe share it to us if you can? I, I do want to get to the other lights. Councilmembers Waddell and Davidson.
I, I was actually prepared to make a motion that we approve. I was prepared to move that we make an approval of option two, but I'm, I can wait until...
Well, I think Councilman Dawkins had asked about that. He, he did the...
Okay, do you already have a second? Because if not, I'm prepared to second.
Maybe I'll collaborate on that.
Okay.
That sounds fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let me get to Councilman Davis and Ingram, Ingram, and then I'll come back to you guys.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, it's, we're not the first city to do this. Like, food truck courts are everywhere. It may be new to us, but it ain't new to being successful. They don't have bathrooms and porta-johns on every food truck corner because most times food trucks post, and then they pack up and go home every single night. You know, some of them stay permanently. But we as the body, we have the authority to make those kind of determinations. But I hope that we don't end up stalling when there's proven, you know, commerce being done 45 minutes away every single day. So I just want to put that out there, that we can get this done.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ingram? Okay. All right, so we'll go to Councilman Dawkins. I did just have one small question. I was at a local restaurant that's in a shopping plaza, and he told me that he, he basically had a problem with a food truck parking in front of his business, basically impacting his customer flow. And he said he called 911 and so forth. But I do want to make sure that there is some restriction here that, that I can't just pull, two or three trucks pull up on land that we don't have an agreement on and start doing business. Does this address that?
Yes, it, it would. It would require that the lot is selected and specifically developed for, for food trucks. You wouldn't just have them, you know, set up in a way that blocks other, other restaurants.
Okay, all right. So the only concern I had, Councilman...
I did have a question, yes. And I, I was supposed to bring it up at the resource center conversation, but I'm gonna bring it up here because it's, it's somewhat hand-in-hand. So I do know that food trucks are supposed to clean up after themselves. And so when we talk about litter and trash, what can, what is there for that? Penalties, fines, or...
Right, so, yes, there are certainly requirements for, for waste disposal, both for the food truck vendors, like larger ones for the food truck vendors, and then a required number of trash cans depending on the number of, of seedings available for, for patrons. And also stormwater protections, and violations may result in fines. And to renew the annual permit, all violations would have to be cured. So if we had somebody who, who was continually leaving garbage or having other violations, they would not be able to renew their zoning permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your very thorough report. I also want to thank the planning commission for unanimously recommending number two. But I have one question. I'm concerned about noise. Some citizens have called, they're concerned, like, you know, they could have the, they could set a band up and play 'cause it's outside. They have to be done by 10 o'clock, is that right? Or talk to me about noise.
My, my understanding is that that would be separate. Any, any event that has outdoor entertainment requires a special permit, is that correct? So it wouldn't be a, a default thing of, oh, we have a food truck court, that means we can have live music all the time.
We're gonna set up a band. If they do that, they gotta have a special permit and all that.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Mayor, I am ready to make a motion if it...
Okay, hey, hey, Council, Councilman Dawkins, and then I'll, all right. Yes, sir, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am like to make a motion to approve T A 21-001 Ordinance Two, the staff recommendation supported by the act. I want to make sure, 'cause earlier I talked about great United States Air Force gentleman, I want to talk about this as an active-duty United States Army soldier and entrepreneur. So got the Army in there, got them both covered. All right. Motion to approve T A 21-001 Ordinance Two, Mr. Mayor.
So we got a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, got a second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion on the motion? It's been discussed?
Well, I, I did push my red button, Mayor, so I know it's lit up down there. I just...
Does that mean no, that you don't have any discussion?
Well, it's not so much on the particular motion, because I say I'm, I'm very supportive of this item, but I'm still want to go back to what I have asked. The whole reason this is before us tonight is because I tabled it. Now, I ought to be able to get some response for reasoning pulling this. Here, I sent all the information out to staff.
Yeah, I think she was gonna give you a real detailed...
So what, my only concern, I'm, I'm trying to find it, is how do we help those food truck vendors without the permanent structures? How do they continue to move forward? That was what my question was. If that could have been sent to me within the timeframe before coming back here tonight, I would be good. I'd be ready to move forward.
So you'll send that to Councilman Hare?
Sure. Yes, I would, I would be, I would be happy to put together an answer that addresses. I want to make sure I have the question exactly right. How do we help individuals or groups of food truck vendors who want to set up as a, as the principal use but without a permanent structure? Is that correct?
Because this one here is surrounding a permanent structure.
Well, it, it would require certain permanent fixtures, such as, you know, accessible bathrooms. We want to make sure there's a place where people, where people can, you know, wash their hands and, and use the bathroom, and that requires running water. And we want to make sure that we don't have a cacophony of generators making noise and pollution. So that's why there's the requirement for electrical outlets.
Well, I'll just be expecting to get some feedback. We could have done this earlier without me tabling it if it would have been handled. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, I'll look to you for action on the motion. Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
No, no, no. So we had a closed session. Was Banks McLaughlin still on for a vote?
I, I don't think so. So, so her votes in the affirmative, right?
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, when we approved the agenda, did we catch closed session in it?
Cindy.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to find us a way, y'all. All right, so motion to go into closed session, is there a second?
For attorney-client privileges.
Privilege, briefing, brief.
And confidential.
Attorney-client privilege. All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram, this is a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for...
Thank you, Chair. Great job.
Councilmember Kinston?
Great job.
Council, oh, yeah. All right, all right. If everyone could excuse us except for...
Yeah.
Yeah.